Anyways.
All right, good evening. The time being 7:00 PM. Quorum of the planning board being present. I call this meeting of the planning board to order. First item on the agenda, approval of minutes for January 27th, 2020.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes of January 27th, 2020 as written.
All right, I have a motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is opposed. And now the minutes for January 28th, 2020. That was our special meeting with the zoning bylaw committee.
I'm making a motion that we approve as written, January 28th, 2020.
All right, I have a motion made. Do I have a second? Motion made in second. All's in favor, signify by saying aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Moving on to agenda item B, committee reports, administrative actions. Are there any committee reports that any members wish to make at this time?
Mr. Chairman, we had a meeting of these local housing partnership and we are in the process of designing a a full housing buydown policy in our committee to present to the selectmen going forward. So, we're in the works of doing that, but nothing solid yet, so.
Very good. Any other committee reports? None at this time?
No.
All right. Moving on to agenda item B2, non substantial change determination, 20 Carter Street. All right, so, well, while we have some to get settled, just for FYI, I went to the site. Went through several things. Actually, I'll let you state your name for the record that we were.
David Hughes from Breakaway Center.
All right, so, I met with David. David's not the owner. We've talked about this before, there's sort of three levels. So, this isn't really his issue, but he met with me and has been addressing the issue, you know, for the space. So, just to remind everybody that, you know, when we've been having a hard time getting a hold of the people, this wasn't the person we've been trying to get a hold of.
I'm not the people.
So, just keep that in mind when we go through and take our turn. And so, and Mr. Hughes has already done some of what we discussed. I showed all of you an idea of what I thought would be helpful onsite. At this point, some of that is complete. Some of it, I think, is going to be completed the next time this, you know, fair weather. I think what we have so far is this lining out in the very front of the building, in that sort of drop-off space, as well as the area where people were confused as to whether it was parking or not, right near the building.
Right.
And then out in the parking lot, where the rose end of the active parking, there's a section where a couple of spaces were added, but now there's a cap lining at the end of one of them. There will be a cap lining at the end of the other one, again, when the weather gets nicer, but.
Which immediately solved the problem. I was there Saturday for probably five, six hours. Not one person parked there, so.
Good. So, I'll let you, if you have anything to present, and then we can go through and then, you know.
Just the fact that the parking lot was striped properly, but after years of snow plowing and everything else, the lines were out, so I just basically went over the lines that were parked out front. And we added the end cap and that literally eliminated the problem. And I also contracted RCH Transportation in Tuxbury. And they're actually gonna post signs and tow illegally parked vehicles from the facility. And that should spread the word to the first person that gets towed. The hockey community's pretty tight and word's gonna spread pretty fast.
Appreciate that.
And I just want to address, there were some other issues with all our permits are up to date, where the health department, we rebuilt the bathrooms in the facility. We have all that permits for that. We have permits with hazardous materials, the building department, so we fixed the place up. I don't know if any of you have been in there lately, but we've done a pretty good job. And we just timed the state championship banners for Tuxbury High a week and a half ago, so if you guys have any questions.
Still, Mr. Delaney?
I'm all set as long as they restriping. Put the signs in that they're supposed to have. And other than that, we weren't questioning what they did on the inside. Okay, that building department has the say for that. But as long as the parking lot is striped and the people park where they're supposed to park, which is next to impossible, I think.
Right.
You know, you don't have a tow truck going in there 15 times a day. But I'm fine with what they're doing.
All right. Mr. Fowler?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank you for the work you've done, because I think I missed you twice.
Yeah.
I missed someone doing it down there. It was down there, and I think Wednesday or Thursday. And I liked the bright yellow paint. Shows up nice and shouldn't be any problem at night for those people that are with most of the hockey is, except on Saturdays and stuff.
Right.
So, and I know it's said about the signs, but you're telling me you're going to do the signs.
Yes, they're being made right now.
And I guess they have to get approval from the town to post the signs. Is that true? No, I don't think so. Okay. All right. The sign, those internal directions.
It's just gonna say, "RCH Transportation Vehicles Illegally Parked Will Be Towed at Owner's Expense."
Good, that's fine.
And those are gonna be posted on the columns that are right out front, so people see them right when they walk in.
Okay, great. And the way that's hash marked off in the front of the doors, that leaves no problem, you know, that's, is, do you consider that a drop-off zone?
Not really, but it was made that way on the prior meetings years ago, so buses could kind of loop around in. There's a ton of space for buses and anything else to pass through there. And we also have to repaint the arrows directing people, because those are one out of correct. So, that 45, 50 degree weather only lasted two days, so I did as much as I could.
No. I'm all set. Is all of the bond for this, for the striping? Is that what's left?
Well, the bond is just the bond. We were holding on to it because this was an outstanding issue.
Right.
Again, not Mr. Hughes's, you know, thing, so to me, what he's doing is, you know, what we're looking for. And then I think it's back to the owner who, you know, told us that he'd be back in April to deal with the bond.
I guess my question, is there anything else that we know, other than the striping?
Unless we have something, but I don't think so.
I don't.
I think that's it.
All right, that's fine. I'm all set.
Mr. Vitale?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, the striping that's there now, there's no parking for employees or buses or anything like that, right? Correct?
Where, out front of the building?
Yeah.
No. It states no parking where the striping is.
Okay. I had thought that myself, but on my visit there today, there were two cars parked in the striping.
They were there last night, too. I was gonna get to it, but yeah.
Okay.
They're still not quite.
I went by today, did a site visit, I'm like.
Well, once that sign goes up, because anybody that usually parks there, they think they're in the in crowd, that they can just park there. And I don't care who it is, if it's the head coach of our junior team, they're gonna get towed.
I thought maybe there'd been employees, but is there a location for employee parking? Well, you know, in the side. Okay, just so you know, my visit today, I'm like, if this is supposed to be blocked off for no one to park, there's two people parked there. So, I have a picture on my phone if you like, but other than that, any plans to stripe the rest of the parking lot?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, it's already striped, but this spring I plan to. Now that I see how bright everything is, I'm gonna go over.
Yeah, a lot of the other spots are just have won over time, being the number of uses of cars coming in and out of there.
Even when you're exiting, there should be a yellow line at the exit, going out onto the street.
Yep.
There's gonna be a restriping of that yellow line and the arrows going right, left, and directing people to come around.
Sounds good, so. Other than that, I mean, I'm a hockey fan and hockey parent and all that stuff, and still, I know, go to the game, so. In our last meeting, I wanted to make sure we get this taken care of, because people and teams come from out of town to use our facility, play our games there, so we wanted to be in the best condition possible, nobody getting hurt, so. But other than that, I'm all set, Mr. Jim. Thank you.
Mr. Ryder?
Thank you. You know, I agree. Once you restripe the entire parking lot, it's gonna, it's gonna help the situation.
Okay.
But those end caps will be significant. I dropped off there a few weeks ago. It was interesting. To say the least.
Well, once one person parks, then it's like dominoes. Everybody just kind of extends the line, so.
No, I think the striping is gonna be a big help. Good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, again, like you said, you know, we met, we kind of walked the site, so I appreciate you taking the time to do that with me. I did see the same thing. I went to pick up my son last night, and I mean, right up at the door, someone stopped and parked. And I thought it was picking up, and I just thought it was a really terrible way to pull in, and then I realized there was nobody in the car. The only thing I can say.
Were the gym spaces, were?
No, I'm talking about literally in front of the front door.
Okay.
For the rink itself.
Okay.
I mean, they were almost onto the sidewalk.
Okay.
That's there, which, I mean, that's pretty almost nobody should think that that would have been okay, but whoever that was, there was nobody even in the car.
Okay.
So, the only thing I'll say about the striping the way it is now is, those lines that you have still coming straight out almost look like parking lines, mixed with those sideways lines.
Okay.
That's the only thing that I worry about, is that someone's not seeing it correctly somehow, but again, we can't, we can't ask you to account for everyone.
No, but I could add, no parking on that one spot.
In that curved area, once the no parking goes in, in that curved, you know, in front of the yellow, I think at that point, anyone who parks after that should be towed out of there for just foolishness.
Right.
And for no other reason, because if you're, if you honestly think you should be parking that close to the building, and it's not even a handicap spot to boot, there's something wrong with you.
Right.
Like, you should be able to figure out, there's no way you should be parking there. So, once the cars start getting hauled out of invento spaces, which is what they're doing, I think you'll start to have that problem go away.
Right.
So, you know, once, and those arrows we talked about that give people a way to do the drop-off, which way they should come and kind of flow out, as well as those one you talked about in the drive area, the kind of the two in, the two out, heading, you know, towards the exit, you know, and in.
Correct.
After that, there should be no more question for anybody. Anybody who does it wrong after that takes it upon themselves.
Yep.
You know, there's no more that could possibly be done by the site to explain to people where they should be and where they shouldn't be, and what they should do when they're driving through there at that point. And there's no more you can do, other than start towing people out of there, and the message will get out eventually.
Agreed.
So, Mr. Fowler?
Sometimes you have to you have to feed the people. I almost said breastfeed. I did say breastfeed, all right. Yep. It's a shame that we have to, you can't write something and have people understand what it means. So, I think you could probably add one other thing. Sure, the lines maybe could be a little different, but it's a yellow, you can't fit, you couldn't fit a Volkswagen in there if you dropped it down with a helicopter. So, how are you gonna get in there to park? It says no parking, but let's say, why don't you say, do this, no parking, fire lane. And that's the law. That way, when the police are called, it says right there.
Right. Okay.
I mean, it's good, yeah, I mean, that kind of is what it is anyway, so by putting that in there, all you're really doing is just indicating what it is, and that, those wording, that wording should take up that curve. So, that whole section, if you drive right over those words, at that point, there's no more for you to try to say to you, so.
And I've actually contemplated getting one of those Yota pedestrian signs to put out front of it as well, like the rubber base with the stand-up that people will see that, so they won't even possibly pull into that. So, I don't know if that would be okay with you guys as well.
Yeah, I mean, within the site.
Any way you can stop them. We'll go along with any way you can stop them from parking there.
Anything that makes it safer, just with all those kids coming in and out with the bags and, you know, you're talking and you only have paying attention and next thing you know, there's, you know, cars on top of you, for no good reason, other than, you know, people don't want to walk five feet. At that point, it's just, you've done as much as you can do to make the site safe and to put people where they belong. There's not more, there's no more that we can ask at that point.
Correct.
The one thing we did discuss is, like I said, as a heads-up warning, I would start putting some signs inside that say, you know, you decide how you want to say it, but something along the lines of after, you know, concerns about safety from the town, you know, the parking lot has been restripped, cars will be towed if they're illegally parked. And that gives everybody who's wandering around in there for, in the warm room and whatever else for, you know, an hour or between periods, a chance to stumble upon the warning, that they may not notice on the pillars coming in. Not that you're, that's up to them to notice. But they've had full warning, more than enough warning, that cars are gonna start getting dragged out of there, and, you know, if you come out and find your car missing, it shouldn't be hard to figure out why, so.
If some of the people in the audience kind of wonder why, we're a little frustrated about this, it's because this has been going on for a while, and through no fault of anybody that works there or us, but we just can't have this anymore. And it's sometimes, there were only one or two people in the whole building, doing other chores, and it was difficult for us to get parking cleared and people moved. So, we had to take this hard line, but it's within the law. So, and it's for the safety of the children, as has been said, so.
No, like I said, it was immediate gratification, like, nobody parks there.
That's good.
Especially on a Saturday.
Good job. Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks. Oh, I'm sorry, we gotta do this as a non substantial change, because we're amending the original parking, so to have a motion on, so with the drawings plus those four extra parking spaces that were allowed at the end of the row, to have a motion to accept this as a non substantial change?
Don't move.
And I would waive the fee.
And waive the fee, I'm sorry, that was the other one. And waive the fee. So, we have that motion?
Yes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
All right. Moving on to agenda item C. Ponderosa Road, Tyler Estates, the special permit modification to definitive subdivision. Motion to waive the reading. Motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is opposed, motion carries. Gentlemen, if you just state your name for the record, the floor is yours.
Matt Gansberg, applicant.
That one works.
Works.
Jim Hanley, Civil Design Consultants.
That one's a little quiet, huh?
Okay. So, I'm just gonna kind of give you, this project's been going on for a little bit here, I'm just gonna give you a real brief history and tell you why we're here tonight, so. This is Tyler Estates, which is Ponderosa Road. We're here tonight for a modification to a subdivision approval. The project has quite a bit of history for the last, you know, it's only been around for 20 years, give or take. A lot of things kind of happened since then, so. 1999, original subdivision approval by UAB Board. 2003, we had a modification, a formal modification to the subdivision, and then in 2007, there was a non substantial change. Just so everybody knows, the actual subdivision itself is made up of a roadway, which we're gonna take on as private roadway. It's about 300 feet in length. It has been constructed up to binder, utilities in the ground, the drainage in the ground, all the way up to binder. And that's kind of where it's been sitting now for
10 years? 10 plus years, yeah.
Yeah, 10 years, give or take. So, Matt has, wants to build on the single lot that's located within Tuxbury. The westerly sideline, right of the right of way, is actually the corporate boundary between Tuxbury and Wilmington. So, there's two lots that are actually Wilmington, that'll be on the scope of what we're doing here, but this private road will provide frontage to those two lots. The lot that Matt has is plus or minus five acres, has about 300 feet of frontage on this private roadway. It has maybe an acre, an acre and a half of all pland area, give or take. When we decided we were gonna go forward and try to build a house on the lot, we spoke with the town, we talked a little bit about the potential for a non significant change versus a formal notification, modification. There were some paperwork issues at the registry. The original subdivision plan or one of the modifications was never actually formally recorded. So, we have to come back anyways, so that eventually you can release the lot, write a deed relative to a recorded plan, so. Kind of with all those things and the fact that it's been going on for 20 years, we were kind of directed maybe to consider the modification, and that's what we're here for tonight. So, the modification in its entirety consists of three waiver requests. One is a fee and lieu for the sidewalks. Another is for the potential to allow for overhead electric. Roadway's already constructed. We have limited ability to, we have limited real estate to place on the ground facilities. If the electric company comes in and says that they'd prefer to go over, overhead as opposed to below ground, we'd like to be able to do that and not have to come back to you, so that was kind of the idea here. Since we're coming in, maybe we can ask for this as well. We also asked for a third waiver, which was to waive the curbing. Again, the road's been bed in the ground for 10 years, and generally, the topo allows for the drainage to get to the catch basin, so things seem to be working okay. Received two review letters earlier this morning, one of which was from DPW. And I think we agreed to DPW's recommendations, which is that they would like to see the curbing, so we'll put the curbing in, consistent with the approved subdivision that's there now. So, we'll withdraw that one waiver. And essentially, I think the way they wrote this was that it is DPW deferred subplaning for the other two waivers, being the overhead and then the sidewalk. Did get a, an estimate of $10,500, plus or minus, for the sidewalk. We also got a letter as well from the planner, and I think we're on the same page here. Just to kind of walk through it quickly, one of the items we're asking for relief from was for the fees. Obviously, this has already been approved, and really minor in scope here, we're looking for three waivers, so we've requested that again. That's your ballpark. She'd like to see the plan actually have the waivers on it, which certainly will do. I'll modify the plan, we'll bring it in. Again, she references the fee and lieu, and and she provides a little bit more information, but essentially, that's the application. It's fairly straightforward. It's three waivers, which really kind of got cut down to two before we came here tonight. If you have any questions, we'll try to answer them quick.
All right, anything else? Mr. Ryder?
Thank you. I'll agree with Mr. Hoddeman's request on the curbing. That will fortunately with the drainage, you know, that's gonna help with the issue out there. And the proposed, so you're looking to eliminate one side of the sidewalk?
Both.
All together?
Yeah.
So, I think there's an existing waiver to one side, right?
Okay, that's what I say, was the existing?
Yeah.
It didn't list what the existing waiver was for one side?
Yeah, right. So, now we're gonna, we're gonna request the other side as well.
Yeah, when we first brought it in, it was gonna be a public way. And then because of all these issues with Wilmington and going back and forth between the two towns, we had a conversation with Mr. Sadwick and Mr. Hoddeman, and they both said, yeah, we have no problem with the being a private way, so. That's what the genesis of that.
Okay, and you have not spoke to the electric company? Have they given a?
I have. At the very least, where the power's located on Benson Road, there'll be a pole set at the beginning of the road, and then being, they're treating it as a single house lot, and they don't like to talk to you until you have a foundation in.
True.
So, but they did tell me, if we can go underground, we'll try and make that work. Worst case, it would be a second pole, and then the service would be fed off of that. To the house, yeah, to the single house, so. Preference, I'm gonna try and keep it underground, obviously.
Yep.
It's just, I'd like to have the flexibility if they tell me otherwise, or there's other obstacles that I'm unaware of in the roadway, because I wasn't there when it was built, and, you know, it seems like most of the stuff was put in per plan, but, you know, until you start digging, you don't know what you're gonna find, you know? So, I just, we're just looking for the flexibility if it doesn't work underground, to be able to go overhead, to feed the one house.
But ideally, you would like to go underground?
Oh, 100%, yeah, correct. But there will, there will be a
One pole?
One pole, yeah, to get across the road, correct.
Okay, obviously, you'll have that, is that gonna be on private property, that one pole?
Correct, yeah.
It will be?
Yeah.
Okay. That's all I have now. Thank you.
Mr. Vitale?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, seeing this has been so long, I wouldn't have a problem waiving the fees. We've already paid the fees to the town years ago. To request additional fees at this stage, you know, I don't think it's necessary. Like Mr. Ryder said, you know, the curbing is probably a good thing, you know? And as far as the telephone pole, if we have to go that way, fine, but I wouldn't have a problem giving you the waiver for that either. As far as the sidewalk, you know, I think we need either a fee and lieu of or a sidewalk in. We've been trying to promote sidewalks, but seeing it's 21 house lot, you know, I don't have a problem if we take the fee and lieu of as well, so. Other than that, I'm all set as far as those goes, and again, I don't see that we need to charge the fee again if we've already took it before, so. This is more of a formality, Mr. Hanley, correct? Mr. Hanley? This is more of a formality hearing, right? That was really recommended by Mr. Sadwick to
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
To bring it to the forefront, to have the public have any opinions and comments, correct?
Yeah, I think because the roadway's been there for so long and nothing's happened, thought it was a good idea to just bring it front of the public, notify everybody. Put in the paper, which is what we did, to make sure that.
And the other part of that is I believe that Mr. Fowler, who sat on the original case, so Mr. Sadwick said, you know, not only would you commit for change, you folks have already seen it and you've heard all the back and forth, so that was another suggestion why it died, would be done, so the other members who didn't sit on originally will have it in a similar sense.
Good. Any idea when you'd start this project? Just curious?
Hopefully in the springtime.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sounds good. Just so somebody has an idea, that's listening, or is in the audience, when they can expect some activity down there, so.
Yep.
Good. All set, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Mr. Delaney?
Yeah, the the idea is of the curbing, everybody wants the curvings. I guess that directs the water to where it wants to go. The other thing is the electric. You're gonna take one pole to go across the street and then try to go underground?
Correct.
Are you gonna have a transformer for the underground up?
Uh, no, because it's all secondary.
Okay, so the thing is, that's over 300 feet to get to the house underground. You can't set another pole? Can another pole be set there? And what I'm saying to you is, 300 feet is a long way to run wires underground. Okay? From experience.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Okay? And I was just wondering, you know, with another pole on that street to get you closer to the house, then you can go underground from the house to the pole. But if you have to go underground all the way to the front of the street, I don't know if the lights will light in the house.
Right, yeah, like I said, the initial conversation with National Grid was to do two poles, do the pole at the beginning, and then a second pole, you know, down by the cul-de-sac area.
That makes sense.
And then, yeah, correct.
That makes, that makes sense to me, because if you have to go all that distance, it'll end up 450 feet by the time you're done.
Correct, yeah. I believe that's one of the
Why is that big enough to make the lights light?
Yeah, I believe that's one of the reasons why they prefer to see a foundation in, so they can design it accordingly and know exactly where the house is going, which obviously we're not at that point just yet, so.
Are there gonna be any streetlights on the street?
There'll be a a post light for the house that's on the plan.
Okay. I'm all set.
Mr. Fowler?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, having seen this plan before a few times, I'm pleased that the sidewalk is, not the sidewalk is moving, the sidewalk would be a sidewalk to nowhere. So, that makes all the sense in the world. And with the put in there, you are directing the water. I found one catch basin on the right side. Are the other ones into, Matt, do you know?
Yes, they are, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so that's good. All right, at least now there'll be water direction. Other than that, I'm all set. Thank you very much.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
This, Mr. Lee.
The thing, can you build it even sooner, because they keep dumping shit down the end of that street?
They can't get in there.
Okay, you can't, well, you can't now, but for the longest time they were dumped, there was even For the longest time, they were dumped, there was even a tent, all broken up and dumped down the end of that street.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. And a boat, somebody was storing stuff, I mean, it...
Is that you, Mr. Delaney?
No. But I heard about it every day. Because my father lives on that street.
Yeah.
I lived on that street. Build it as soon as possible, please.
We'll try.
All right. Yeah, I'm fine with the modification. I'm okay with, as long as, you know, do the curbing, I mean, not when the drainage makes the difference, that's, it's worth doing. So just, just for clarification, the, on the sidewalk, waive the sidewalk through the fee, is that, all right. So, yeah, and I have no problem with the sidewalk, as Mr. Fowler pointed out. We want sidewalks, we just want them where they make sense. And the end of a cul-de-sac is not one of those places, so that's fine. Especially when you're only talking about a couple of houses here. Other than that, I'm okay with what's presented, so I'll open it up to the audience. Anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, I return it to the board. I take this as not like our new policy, because I'm taking this as almost like a non-substantial change.
Right.
Just an official, non-substantial change.
Right.
So this isn't going to require the weak, the too weak waiver.
Right.
If the board is fine moving forward.
No, that's fine.
But I just want to let you guys know that that, I don't believe that this would fall under our new process, so.
Yep.
So with that, I return it to the board. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion to close it.
All right, motion made, all, motion made in second, sorry. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. As to the request, to rest the waivers.
Do you want to do them individually, or do you want to...
Just all, all the waivers, whatever you want to, however you want to present them, but do them all at once.
Okay. I'll make a motion to accept waivers as requested.
So we have the waiving of the fee, that's the first. We're not, not as submitted though, because we're not going to give the waiver for the curbing. The curbing's going to still be done.
Okay, yes.
So just, just clarification.
According to, I should say, verification from the letter that Mr. Hardeman...
Okay, so we'll start with the waiver for the fee.
For the filing.
For the filing.
Yep.
The waiver on the sidewalk to the side that was not previously covered, and then the fee in lieu of, and its alternative.
Yep.
And the third is the, on the overhead, like with the provision in there that the preferred way is to go underground where appropriate and for the distance...
Correct, yeah.
...appropriate, as Mr. Delaney mentions. That's sound right?
Sure.
So those are the waivers as submitted, or as proposed. I have a second. Motion made in seconded? Yeah. Motion made in second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Now as to the modification request. So we have a motion to grant the modification request as submitted. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in seconded, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. The only clarification that was the...
Waivers are going to be on the plan.
Right, they'll be on the plan, and then the polls, there was the request that the poll, if you end up with the other one, that gets added in on the plan.
Okay, yeah.
Because you won't have it now, you don't know yet.
Yeah, right. It's on the end.
All right, so we've made, motion made in seconded, passed, we're all set with that. Thank you, gentlemen.
All right, thank you.
Build it quick.
All right, moving on to agenda item D, Burt Road Development. We have a request from the applicant to continue this to our March 9 meeting at 7:00 PM. Do I have a motion to continue this matter till the 9th?
So I'm with, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in seconded, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Moving on to agenda item E, 1037 North Street, 1547 Andover Street at all, continued from our 1/27 meeting. Once you guys get settled, if you just state your names to the record, the floor will be
Stephen Lawrenceon.
We are Allenoli with Civil Design Consultants.
Indy Street Civil Design Consultants.
Floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We were, well, happy to discuss this in whatever level of detail the board wants. Of course, we've certainly been here several times at this point, and I believe I was going to kind of skip over the general site overview and kind of get into where we're at today, what we've been doing since the last time we were here, which was January 13th, I believe. At that meeting, we came with two different conceptual layouts, one showing a turnaround and one with an alternative layout that was more or less similar to kind of where we started. Brought some general feedback from this board that the turnaround layout was preferable, and since then, we turned that into a full set of design plans, drainage report, and other documentation. So, that's the package that's before you today. We have been, we've been working with the fire department pretty extensively on this plan. I know there's a general sense of, from this board, that is ready to take some sort of action, one way or the other. So, just to kind of give you a sense of what we've been working through on the fire department's side, this turnaround concept showed up in its first form back in July, actually, of 19. We got our first comment on that from the fire department in October, talking about getting full access around this turnaround. Our initial concept was to have a three-point turn, so the truck would, would need to come around, stop, back up, and then come back forward. So they, they didn't like that, they wanted to fully navigate that turnaround to maneuver through the site. Then, very beginning in November, they requested a 20-foot aisle as opposed to the 14, I believe it was 14 feet, which met zoning but not fire code. So, we made those, both those tweaks and came back really with a new concept in January, showing the 20-foot aisle, the full access turnaround. And then at the end of January, there was some requests from the fire department to add color to the turning movement plan, to add some additional clarification to some of these elements, which I believe that plan, as well as a letter to go with it, should be in your packets as well. Then just last week, we got a comment about showing a right-hand turn coming out of the site. We've previously only been showing this, the truck exiting to the left as opposed to the right, so we provided that, excuse me, that figure as well. And then on the 5th of February, there was some discussion about if a larger vehicle's parked in front of these units, it may impede the path of the fire truck. So, I only bring this up just to give the board, I'm not sure how much you know about kind of the background of what we've been working through, just wanted to bring up what we've been working with the department on. We've, we've worked pretty consistently, pretty regularly to address their concerns, to keep this thing moving forward. The challenge, I think, has just been that we've gotten these comments in kind of a staggered, you know, one-at-a-time type fashion, so we weren't able to just kind of roll everything into one, one big plan revision. So, we'll certainly continue to work with both the board and all reviewers, including the fire department, if and however necessary. Just today, the applicant met with the fire department, and they issued a letter, which I'm not sure if it made it to the board or not.
We do have.
Okay. It didn't make it into my inbox, which is only going to say that. So, I don't want to misquote anything, but it generally said that, that the access is provided, assuming that it meets zoning regulations and things of that nature. So, that's kind of where we stand today. This plan set is, for all intents and purposes, really just a fully developed set of plans from that concept you reviewed back in January. You know, again, I'm happy to get into the weeds of the design as much as the board would like. A lot of the elements have been consistent for quite some time now with the previous pavement, stormwater design, utilities, and the connections, and the driveway accessing across from Deering, and, you know, a lot of the things we've worked through over the past really year or so at this point. We do have a ongoing conservation process. We were scheduled to be with them, was that Wednesday of last week? That last fire department comment came in on that Wednesday, and we weren't quite sure at the time how and if it would impact the design, so we continued that process to next week. So, I think in general, we've worked pretty hard with all reviewers to kind of get it to where it is today. Happy to, and welcome feedback from this board. And again, happy to talk about any particular element of the design as well. There's, one last thing, there is a new landscape plan in that package that highlights things, you know, screened throughout the site, but in particular along McNamara property line to the south of the parcel. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, Mr. Fowler?
You were next up, sorry.
To be honest with you, I don't know where we stand, because between, I mean, you've extended yourself on these plans, you've done everything you've been asked to do, but I'm not sure if you can do everything. I'll give you an example. If you've got two car family, what kind of car is going to go inside the garage?
Kind of car?
With size?
For a family? Well, certainly something with four doors at a minimum, right?
It says on the plan, compact.
Mm-hmm.
Compact inside the garage.
So that space is 18 feet deep, is where it is inside, so...
How many feet do you have in the outside, in the driveway?
That's a typical town parking space, 18 and a half.
So if you have a SUV, where do you pack it? Or a pickup truck, where do you pack it? They're bigger than 18 feet.
Sure. No, I understand what you're, what you're saying. Yeah, yeah.
So, I'm going to offer a recommendation. The two, when you look at the lines that you have for the fire department front wheels, which are the red lines, I believe...
Uh, yeah, I don't know if I gave myself the colorized version, but the outer lines are the limiting factors, so...
We'll put it this way, the closest ones to... If you look at building four, which is almost halfway around the circle, the third unit is the one that has the impediment of the red line into the, right at the driveway. If you reverse those staggered units, would that help you pick up that foot and a half? I think there's a foot and a half difference between these two units, the two, units or a foot.
I believe it's just a foot, so, but we could steal a foot there, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so if you can put, take a foot there, take, just flip these. And that way, the closest ones will be beyond the radius, the, you know, at the, yeah, beyond the radius, and the one in the, the third unit, which is the one at the apex of the, if that's the right word, apex of the radius, that now will have another foot of space. So if that's something you can do there, and also on building five, because the first unit is the one that impedes out to the street, I'm just trying to give the people a little more space to park.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
Because is the unit, did we, going back to a couple of weeks ago, you had two sets of plans, as you stated, and we picked this one, the one that you're depicting here now, right? And does, was it one of the plans that impeded into the, not the, impeded, but the side yard setback?
Yes, this plan has about a little over 17 feet, a little under, I'm sorry. It's a little under 17 feet into the 50-yard, 50-foot setback.
So if we didn't allow you to do that, how would you have these spaces?
I'm sorry, say it again.
Would you have built this roadway and set the other buildings in place if we didn't let you do that?
I think if we didn't have building, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not sure if I fully understand any question, but if we didn't have building five, I don't think we would do a turnaround, because that turnaround serves access to building five.
But I mean, to us, the turnaround is the way to go, from my feelings anyways, and it's, it's a waiver.
Correct.
Right, so I'm in favor of that for this use. And if you, obviously you can follow what I said about the changing those buildings, the other ones are fine, because it's a straight shot.
Right.
Even the ones that go in, when you drive into the building three, and then back out to the turnaround and go, and I like the way you depicted that, so that's fine. But other than that, I'm all set to go.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Fattalia.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I also recommend to echo Mr. Fowler's comments about the driveways. We have to do something to allow the fire department access in there in the event there's something required of the large fire truck. So, somehow, some way, if you redesign his opinion, like his design, in something that works, I'd be all in favor of okaying that. But, you know, having seen Mr. Zawiki's report come in, you know, him having questions, and I also see a statement here from our town, town planner verifying the width of the driveways and so forth and so on, that, so obviously needs some work and some consideration going forward, so...
Understood, and is that a new memo? I'm not sure if I received, I'm just curious.
It says here, please request the applicant verify the width of the driveway directly next to building one for the record.
Okay.
Date is the 7th of February.
Oh, okay, so, yeah, so, yeah, I don't think we saw that yet, so we'll certainly address any comments that are contained.
Also, another comment, the planning board may want to consider increasing the parking stall length for the parking spaces in front of five residential buildings, per the fire department's recommendation, so.
Okay.
No, so, I mean, we've been doing this for a long time, so, we obviously want to get it done right, so, with that being said, if you're going to get resolved those issues, I have no problem voting for, you know, this particular project. Now, were you in possession of the, of the letter from Mr. McNamara?
Uh, no, no. Is this, not if it's current, no.
I think it came in today, so...
Oh, it came in today? I don't think it's...
As we expected, he is not too happy with the, with the, giving the waiver of the, into the, into the setback requirements, so, thinking that it may, you know, impose on his close proximity to development, his backyard per se, and so, so. That's here in the possession. If you, if you want a copy, I've already read it, so, but, again, you know, we want to take into consideration the residents that are in the area, they're going to be affected by this, so, so, it is what it is, so hopefully we can get by that, so.
Sure. Okay. If I may, Mr. Chairman, one thing I didn't mention, the environmental study was submitted as part of this as well, that was a comment from you last time.
Right, I've recently, I've seen that, so...
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that I know.
We had that in our last packet, I believe, so...
Okay, perfect.
I did see it, so, all set with that, so thank you. All set, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Delaney?
I guess everything that has to be said has been said. We got to make the fire department happy with, I think, at least building four, also. And, you know, we'll just, we'll go from there. I don't know how we're going to be able to help Ms. McNamara, Mrs. McNamara, but we'll have to probably take another look at the setbacks. But yeah, I don't know if there's any way we can squeeze another inch out of it. That's it, I'm all set.
Mr. Ryder.
Thank you. You know, I, that was my, you know, I was on board with this layout, but as I stated in the last meeting, I'm concerned about that setback, you know? There is a concern with drainage there that has been brought up. I mean, I don't know how long ago that was. And, you know, dealing with, ultimately, there will be more noise and disturbance on that property, so, have you looked at any, I mean, run any type of diagram to get this within, so you're not within, you know, 17 feet? Have you been able to manipulate that any way to squeeze that down at all?
With the, this type of layout, this is, we're pretty pintier. I mean, we, that last other concept we showed with this number of units and that different configuration did not have that, anyway, that, did not have that waiver request, so...
You know, I will agree with Mr. Fowler on, you know, the turning radius, on offsetting the bump outs, on alternating those units in building four and five.
on alternating those units in Building Four and Five. But I still do have a concern with that setback. All set, thank you.
All right, so I think maybe now is probably a good time, again, to sort of recount where we started and how we've gotten to this point. We were presented with two potential plans a few meetings back. And we sent the applicant out of here, basically, with the understanding that this was the preferred way, even though you presented us with a way where you would not go into the setback and not need the waiver. But we didn't like that design. We want this one because of the way it lays out, understanding that it will cause you to go a little bit into the setback. But again, the reason the setback's as large as it is is really because of what you're butting up against. It's not the kind of setback you would have been required to have if it weren't for where you are.
Correct.
You know, and you're talking about seventeen? I think it's seventeen feet.
Seventeen, sixteen and change.
Yeah, into that. The trade-off being, the rest of the design, this design, was preferable as a trade-off for the seventeen feet. At least, that's the margin we left you with coming out of here, which is why you're presenting this as opposed to the other plan. I'm concerned that we ask the same question about setbacks when that's what we sent you out of here with. I understand it is a concern, but my feeling was we left here having told you to come back with this one and not the other. I know I said that I'm much more apt to be in favor of a waiver when you could prove to me you could do it without the waiver, but the waiver makes the project in its totality better, which is what I felt we left here with. So that's why, you know, we have what we have in front of us. So I mean, I don't want it... I don't want it to feel like, after all this time, because we lose some of what started at the beginning and how many times we've caught up, gone round and round with where these buildings are, why they're the size they are, why there's the number of units in each one that there are, because when we started off, what was the original number?
We started with twenty-five and twenty-one hundred square feet of commercial. That was the first concept.
So that was the original version. This is a long way from that.
Sure, sure.
You know, we've added a lot of bells and whistles to this, or requested a lot of bells and whistles to this as we've gone along. You know, the last one is, you know, to my thinking was making sure the fire department was happy with the turnaround. I think Mr. Fowler's, you know, explained a way to sort of give that little extra bit of room, which is simply flip-flopping the buildings that come out the most with the ones that are setback just a hair more, to give you just that little bit of extra space to make it, you know, a little more, you know... More likely that there won't be any kind of a problem with any kind of a turnaround with the fire department's truck kind of just smoothly going through. Much like our earlier parking discussion, we can't always account for bad actors. But we can do the best we can with what we request on the ground. You know, what happens in application in real life, you sort of work with. But beyond that, this is what we asked for. After all of this, meetings after meetings after meetings, you know, we've left the last pot was really the fire department, was making sure that they could deal with, you know, getting in and getting out in an easy manner, or the manner they prefer. Because obviously, as you pointed out, there was a version of this that had a turnaround. You know, where you back up, go forward, back up. I mean, it's not ideal, it works, but it's not ideal, and that's not what they prefer.
Right.
So that's why we have what we have in front of us. So with that, I'm, you know, I'm happy with what we have in front of us at this point.
Anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns at this time? Please come up.
I just... One comment. And I will agree with you, you know, and I think this layout is the best. And, you know, as I am opposed to the waiver on the setback, I live in that area and understand that this could have been... Or could have been a commercial property. And I think, you know, I agree. From the twenty-five that we originally started with and what the board collectively come up with, I think it's gonna be a nice project on that corner, you know. We worked hard on trying to get something that fit into that neighborhood in not only design, but also having sidewalks, the green space, so... And the plantings, there was a lot of work that was put into this. And I think, and I've talked to a lot of people about this, that at the end of the day, this could have been a big piece of pavement with a couple of commercial storefronts on it. And that one would look good for the neighbors or, you know, residents coming into town. That is one of the major accesses in and out. So I think, you know, as I said, that was a concern with the waiver, but I think at the end of the day, this project is the best. And, you know, everyone did a lot of hard work, including the applicant, back and forth. It's about a year's time that we went back and forth to the drawing board, and I think they've come back and gave us a good project.
So I offered it up to the audience, and no one came up, so we're kind of back to the board. What I would say at this point is, well, this project predates our new process. I do think with the couple of things that you have on here to like clean up and show, Mr. Fowler requested for the... How the building's gonna look. What I would suggest at this point is that we sort of use the new process, even though we wouldn't have held them to it, because I think there's the opportunity, because they're gonna need to come back for the next meeting. You may not have been here when I discussed what our new process is, but the idea is, at this point, when we feel like we're getting at the... Close to the end, when we think maybe we'll take action at the next meeting, that we're gonna have a draft decision drawn up that would include waiver requests, conditions that we've asked for during the deliberations and the public hearings, all included in there. That way, the applicant have a chance to be sure that they're on the same page and the board is on the same page as to what's gonna be required. And you'll have that to be able to discuss with us. The idea is that you should get it the week before the next meeting. That way, we can come in, if any of us feel that we're not on the same page, we can hash that out before we close the hearing. That way, we're not trying to reinvent the wheel when we start making our motion to do whatever it is we're going to do. So I think we'll use that here and request that that be generated, taking into account the requests we've made over time for this project and incorporating this evening as well.
Including a final plan.
Right, exactly. So if you come in prepared with everything set at the next meeting, there's the possibility that we would be able to, you know, close and, you know, render a decision at that point. But at worst, we're at least sure we're on the same page from a decision standpoint. You've seen it, we've seen it, and we can all have a chance to comment in the last... What might be the last hearing on it. All right? All right, so with that, our next meeting is the 24th. We have a motion to continue this till 7:10 on the 24th. Motion made.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. All right, very good, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Oh, thank you.
Andy, do you want the...
Do you want... Yeah, that's...
All right, moving on to Agenda Item... 600 Wubin Street. The applicant has requested that we continue this until February 24th, which is already on here. So do we have a motion to continue the 600 Wubin Street hearing until 7:05 on February 24th?
Some move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Moving on to Agenda Item E, 120 Lumber Lane. Use special permit, continue from our 127 meeting.
I think we got the... We got this, don't we?
All right, gentlemen, if you'd just state your names to the record, the floor is yours.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, David Plunkett represents the applicant. With me here tonight is Joseph Phelan, who is the principal of the applicant 120 Lumber Lane LLC, and also Mr. Richard Cuco, who is here for explanation relative to the layout of the parcel. Mr. Chairman, last time we spoke, indicated that we were in discussion with the town relative to certain criteria for moving forward. I have submitted to you a letter from Attorney Zarulis as Town Council dated today's date, in which there's a list of items that were to... Would be acceptable to the applicant as conditions of the use special permit as approved by the board, together with whatever conditions may be imposed. And it's understood, and, you know, again, accepted, and the agreement with the town was that these specific items, in order for the permit to issue, we would agree upon and request that these items be incorporated into any permit as issued by the board. Chairman, just to make clear the site, we have the location on the board. And, you know, this is a site that has been... Has gone through a site plan special permit. What we're requesting from the board is not... We're not looking to add one square inch to any building. We're not asking to change anything relative to the footprint of any building, the layout of the roadways or the passageways, the parking or anything of that sort. The only thing that we're dealing with is the use special permits. We had listed, you know, the use special permits that we were requesting that would be compatible or that would be in line with the uses that are already there and uses that were compatible to the site. Last meeting, we spoke about the location of the site, you know, what it's surrounded by and things of that sort. And also, we want to make certain that, you know, there is another parcel that's, you know, in front of this site, that there was some discussion that seemed to be drawn into the questions before the board, but, you know, we're dealing with a site that's laid out, existing, and it is not one bit of change to anything. Not one square inch, as I said, of footprint, parking areas, or anything of that sort. The list that we presented to you, we feel was representative of the uses that are there and/or would be very much acceptable or compatible with this location. Mr. Chairman, you raised an issue about, well, what if one single use were to, you know, take over the entire site? And, you know, we understand, you know, the concern and, you know, suggestion that we came up with would be that if we had a condition that said that any... If at any time, any one usage allowed under the special permit, use special permit exceeded seventy percent of the gross leasable area, the applicant would have to come back to the board for a modification. And I think that would be appropriate. It would give a certain element of control over the property. And it's also a situation where if you look at the uses and look at the current tenant use, there are a number of uses there that, you know, are different, but they overlap. You know, so there are a number of, you know, the classification of the contractors yet. And that's any type of tenant that has a truck, you know, a plumber, electrician, that has a business and they're going out and things of that sort. So you have situations like that, that it makes sense that there would be more than one particular use. But the suggestion that we're offering is say that, look, we're... We think that everything we listed out is in keeping with what's there, compatible with the expected uses that would be appropriate there. It's not, you know, the development that was talked about for the parcel in front of it. There are a number of other uses, and it's not just a blanket use of every special permit that's allowed under the HI-1 district. I mean, under the HI-1 district, I mean, you can have, you know, seal of alcohol. You can have seal of... With special... With use special permit, you could have, you know, drive-throughs. You could have seal of fuels and things of that sort. We're not suggesting that. If you look at the list of what we're suggesting, it's compatible with what's there now and all would be very much in keeping with what's there now. So it's a very well-run site. It's something that, you know, I think that... The point we were trying to make last week in terms of, you know, it would be a... Something to point to, not necessarily saying, oh, look, everyone gets, you know, that... And I don't agree that it is a blanket of every use, because it's not every use. But it's a situation we're addressing with many... We've had many meetings with the town, with the Town Council, Plan and Development, the Building Commissioner, and we've actually, Mr. Phelan has, you know... You know, has gone out of his way to make certain that everything is being done by the book, which is, I think, what everyone probably expects that has had any dealing with Mr. Phelan in the past. So that's the wrap-up. And I think, you know, we're open to any questions or queries.
Before we continue, Mr. Ryder, as you missed our last meeting, you have reviewed the minutes from the last meeting. You're up to speed.
Yes.
You'll have your paperwork to sign that will go into the record.
Correct.
All right? So with that, we'll start with you.
Oh, thank you.
Your turn.
Mr. Plunkett just stated that, you know, that he would follow all guidelines. And I'm reading that... I'm a little confused by, we're approving a special permit, but yet, all work that's been done on the property, building permits need to be obtained and complied with. So I'm a little confused on that. So it's counterintuitive to what you just said, that he will... It's very confusing of the letter that we received and what you just stated.
The reason for that is that, and I think it's in the minutes, but the building department, if you need to pull a building permit, and there's one fellow in there who assembles water filters, which is manufactured, which wasn't one of the ones that was approved up till now. So he can't get a building permit until the use is qualified by you folks. So that's why we're here. Once we get those uses all aligned, then the Building Commissioner can say, okay, that's a permitted use. This is what you need for this building permit. This is what you need for this fire protection. This is what you need for this health and safety.
And I think it should also be pointed out that that particular tenant, it's been an expansion of the business over the years that has now kind of segwayed into an expanded business operation that now triggers this. And so basically, what we're looking at is the site as a total and bringing everything in compliance, which, again, if you went to other sites, I'm sure that, you know, you're gonna find that there are other situations that are far more out of compliance than what we have here. This is a property, again, that was very well-run, or that is very well-run, and that you've had some tenant uses that have expanded and that those expansions have now triggered some of this oversight. And part of the discussion last week is that, you know, right now, we're trying to come up with a manner in terms of, you know, having a business operation, allow that business operation to continue, continue to thrive. continue to thrive, continue to be, you know, in despite of, or, you know, in spite of what you might say, oh, look at this. You know, what does this mean? It's, it's a situation where you have a, an owner that has sat down with the town and said, let's do this comprehensive review. We've had an architect come in and go through the buildings, not, not just a cursory review, but we've had Sullivan Gavin, you know, Jack Sullivan and Dan, what's his name?
Don Hill.
Don Hill, I'm sorry, from Sullivan Gavin. And they have done comprehensive reviews of the buildings and then sit down with the building commissioner and go over everything. So I think what you're, you know, the, the impression in terms of, oh, well, this is an indication of that it's contrary to what you're saying. But, but no, it's not. Because if you, if you got a architect to go through every building in town, do the type of comprehensive review that we had done, and then sit down with the building commissioner and come up with issues to say, okay, we're going to be 100% compliant, I think you'd see a much more extensive list than, than what we have here.
I, I don't disagree with you, but those other buildings are not coming in for a special permit. So if they did, in fact, were coming in for a change, they would have to fall and comply with all current building codes.
Right, which is what we're, what we're saying we're going to do.
It's the chicken or the egg.
Okay. I'm just looking at some of these items that are listed. These have been building codes for a exit signs and emergency lighting has been a building code for, I think that was the 1993 electrical code that that was put in place, so.
But that's not an indication that there's nothing there. This is just a situation where, again, we have done this extensive inventory by a certified architect and then finding anything and everything that's not 100% compliant. So that, that's, I think, has to be clear that, you know, we're not talking about.
That's not in what we're reading, though, so.
Well, it's.
I'll, you know, I think that ultimately falls back to the building department to meet compliance. And I don't necessarily know that that falls to this board, that we're approving something that.
If somebody else doesn't say, I'll, I'll do it when my turn.
Okay, so.
Just my thought.
No, just my concern on it, so.
I might not get by, Mr. Fogle, we'll see.
Okay.
Mr. Delaney.
Thank you.
Yeah, if I'm not mistaken, the last time they were here, we came up with the fact that we were going to go to Town Council and get a rule. Well, it seems like we've got a ruling from the building commissioner, the town manager, assistant town manager, and the lawyer. He says it's okay for them to do what they want to do. So if that's what we asked, and this is the answer we got, I seem to go along with what they want. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I'm all in favor of businesses staying in town. But my main concern is that you are in compliance. So I guess one of my issues before receiving this letter tonight from you, David, and in the, this is a ruleless, is contrary to what I have in my notes. I'm like, so I am looking to say to you, I'm like, I would always want you to commit compliance with all of the requirements of the building commissioner first, and then come to us.
We need a special permit, we need a use special permit.
I know that, I know that.
We can't pull the.
It's a chicken or the egg, Mr. Patel.
I know, I understand.
Fortunately, they're the farmers, not us.
Right. So my other question was, how many uses are currently not authorized down there that are in existence, would you say? Just curious.
Well, on the submitter letter, we had the list of the tenant uses and all the uses that were use special permits, so, that required use special permits. So if you look to the.
Just a guess, Dave, you're going to have to go through all that. Just a guess, how many, I mean, majority of them are in compliance, correct?
In terms of the, one, two, three, four, five. Five uses, not, not specific tenants, but five uses by tenants require use special permit that don't have it at this time. So that's what we'd be asking for here. That, that's what we're trying to do, is get this use special permit so we can start the permitting process. We can't pull the permits until we've got the use special permit. So that, that's.
Yeah, I understand. So being at the site today, just looking at the signage, are there 26 companies down there?
I think it's 26, yeah.
Okay, because I happen to go down and look at all, look at the signage that's down there. So, and it totals 26, so. You know, it's just a, you know, unfortunate situation where a can of worms is opened and now it's in front of us. So, you know, in reading Mr. Zorulus's letter today, I mean, if we can come to a happy medium, I'm all set. Because I don't want to be deterring businesses from the town. For me, a family, so. I'll say it, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Fogle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Saved you for last.
Yeah, right, yeah. No, your last.
That's true.
It would be easy for me to say I'm all set. And I am, because I know you guys have done a fine job, put it together. Probably done more work than you would have normally had to if the chicken was before the egg or the egg wasn't chicken. But I could understand how this came about. And I can understand, I know full well that everything that you have there will be approved and permitted when we're done. When we're done here, you'll be able to go and get your permits. And do you have any concern with my saying that, Mr. Plunkett or Mr. Cuco? No, sorry.
No.
So he said. Let the record indicate that they both nodded their head and were negative.
Sorry, David.
No, I mean, again, this is what we're trying to do, is get this so we can do what has to, to finalize what has to be done. And again, it's a question of timing and getting this as a necessary ingredient, ingredient, not ingredient, ingredient to move forward.
I mean, anybody that drives down there, whether it was 15 years ago or today, is, where did this come from? This is unbelievable. I mean, it was a fine job, because most, everybody in this room probably had never been down there before Mr. Phelan bought it. After Mr. Phelan bought it, it becomes very nice, very attractive. Curbs, streets, sidewalks, lights, signs, perfect. And, and he just wants to keep doing the same thing and doing it right. Thank you, Joe. That's all.
All right, well, I gave you the hottest time the last time you were in, so. While we're back. It's not the concept that I necessarily have the issue with, you know, they are all uses that we would otherwise okay up there individually. So it's not like I'm, you know, any of the uses you're talking about is, is an issue in and of itself. My concern was the, you know, the granting in advance or permanently, that those uses can all kind of flow in and out, you know, as they come up, without having to come back to the board. You know, and there's a balancing to that. One of the reasons it's set up is so that the board sort of knows we're going in individually each time. I can see, but from a, from a business standpoint, how that slows down the process, obviously. Tenant comes in, thinks it's a use, they can use there, which they're correct, but still requires you to come here first. My other issue was, you know, sort of the precedent of it, is that this isn't the only site that could ask for the same thing within town. So obviously, you know, by all indications, this owner does all the things they're supposed to do. You know, and we always prefer to deal with folks who do that. It's just you don't know if he's always going to own the property. So those were some of my concerns. You know, and then obviously the one where, you know, by doing this, you could have the entire site become one thing, or two things, whatever. You know, the, the suggestion of the percentage. Now, when you said the 70%, is that, did you mean that by unit or by floor space?
I was suggesting by square footage, and that any, any use, even if it's, you know, again, there could be a tenant that has three or four uses that are use special permit. So we're just saying that any, any one use could not be found in more than 70% of the gross square footage of the, of the premises.
Mr. Chairman, may I add something?
Yeah.
We created part of this, and this isn't a problem. It's something that we did, planning board did, a few years ago to straighten up the looks of condo garages, which this, this wasn't that, but it became that. And when we said automotive use could only be in so many of them, and there were really two, two areas. One area here, not your site, but area around there, and the area off Main Street, Master, not, yeah, Washington Street, down in that area, which there were about seven different buildings. And half of them are built, are owned by one company, and the other half, on the other side of the street, by another company. I would venture to guess, not on the side closest to Washington Street, but the far side, I would venture to guess that 100% or near 100% of those units are automotive use. Well, we created it, so I have to be, we wouldn't want, I wouldn't want to add a 70% leeway thing, argument there now, because we created that. That's what's going in there. People say, where can I go? That's where you can go. The ones on the other side of the street are mixed use. They have different, like yours, different uses in Shands and DeBamas. Perfect. So I, I have to look at it each individually, as an individual. I wouldn't want to set a bylaw or a plan. 70%, 70% for this probably works. But I wouldn't want to say that that's the law for every place. I really couldn't, because I know what's there.
Right, well, I mean, I think honestly, that's part of the argument here, that this is, this site is unique, and it's why we're doing it here. So we have several unique things possibly working here. Putting that 70% trigger in there, that if you get to the point where anything above 70% would cause it to have the same use on more than 70%, then you do have to come back in here, you know, sort of the way it is now. The other is this, this letter that we received, which is, again, it is a little odd, but it's odd because this is a new situation. It's an opportunity to get all of these things covered in sort of one fell swoop in connection to what, you know, the applicant's asking for. So I, from that standpoint, I can understand why that sort of litany list that we have here comes in like this, as well as the permitting, because obviously you would, you don't have these use special permits approved yet.
We can't get, we can't.
We could do them individually, but that's defeating the purpose of what you're asking for anyways. You know. I, I remain torn, but if I, if, if we go forward with this, I, I would say this, that this is not a, you know, a welcome mat for every commercial site in town to come in asking for this. Because I don't know there are any others that would, you know, that would lead me to, to want to do this as a, as a, as a policy. So, you know, if we move forward with this, I'm definitely looking at this as an individual decision for this site and not, you know, a blanket statement that, you know, anyone who has sites like this, you know, come on down, you know, we'll talk. So with that, I'll open up to the audience. Anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns, please come up.
Jonathan Ricker, Clark Path Road. I spoke here last week, or last meeting. I had some concerns. It sounds like some of you may have heard them. I know, Mr. Rider, you weren't here. I do have some more questions, just because I'm not privy to all the paperwork that's there. Could we please recite to the people watching at home, what are the special uses that are being requested?
Mr. Plunkett.
Yes, we're requesting that the approval of, referencing the current use chart, Appendix A of the current use chart, number C-13, which is motor vehicle general repair, C-23, indoor commercial recreation, D-7, manufacturing, D-9, warehouse, D-12, contractors yard, C-12A, motor vehicle, motorcycle trailer ATV rental and lease sale, D-8, silver products at retail manufactured on the premises, and D-16, steel fabrication. So it's in numerical order, it'd be C-11, C-12A, C-13, C-23, D-7, D-8, D-9, D-12, and D-16.
Thank you. Could you please tell the audience, what are those current uses on site? Or which ones are not currently used on site?
The current uses are, the first ones I referenced are C-13, C-23, D-7, D-9.
The types, just for the people that don't know what the chart is.
Oh, sorry, okay. C-13, motor vehicle general repair, C-23, indoor commercial recreation, excuse me, D-7, manufacturing, D-9, warehouse, D-12, contractors yard.
That didn't sound like the, how many are there? Is that what exists today?
That's what's existing at the site today.
Okay, and then the one, the additional ones you're asking?
And then for the future would be C-11, retail sales, not elsewhere set forth, C-12, C-12A, motor vehicle, motorcycle trailer ATV rental and leasing, D-8, silver products at retail manufacturing on the premises, and D-16, steel fabrication.
Okay, is there a specific reason why you're asking for those approvals with this approval? Do you have a, somebody who's going to rent it and use it for that use?
It's seen as very, you know, as a potential for tenancy at the site that would be compatible with the site. And one of the problems that facing trying to operate a site like this in competition with some of the adjoining towns and communities is that if someone is coming in and says, hey, I'd be interested in renting this site, they're looking to get in soon. They don't want, if you then say, oh, okay, I've got to go and get the butts list, and then I've got to publish and get a hearing, and it's going to be, you know, a couple of months down the road.
So essentially just following the process that's currently in place?
Well, actually, that's the question in terms of, it says uses. There's, there really is nothing in the bylaw that says for each tent. It talks about the site. It talks about this, you know, there's nothing saying tenant-specific, actually, within the, within the bylaws. It talks about, and that's why our emphasis last week was on the site, the layout of the site, and that, you know, these uses. And it's not a litany of every use that's allowed by special permit. It's not every use special permit. It's only those uses that we would feel would be compatible with the location, with this layout of the premises, and therefore would be appropriate.
How many square feet?
For what, square footage of rental?
Total square footage of?
75,000.
75,000?
Yeah.
So I believe the, the tipping point is 10,000 square feet, right? If you're over 10,000 square feet, you have to come and ask.
Well, that would be a site plan, no, you know, that, that's not a use special permit. That would be a site plan special permit.
Okay, you're telling the truth.
And it would still be triggered if someone came in that had, you know, there is, you know, again, that's why I made the reference, Mr. know, again, that's why I made the reference, Mr. Chairman, that we're not changing one square inch of any, uh, building footprint. We're not changing a parking space. We're not changing one thing on this site. If there are uses and things that's what, that aren't as listed here for use special permit, or uses that trigger site plan special permit, it's still going to trigger site plan special permit. It's, you know, the use special permit has absolutely nothing to do with use special permit, which may be triggered by the 10,000 square foot trigger, depending on the size and what you, what you're planning on doing. So, you know, we can't be, we can't be melding these different special permit concepts and, and.
That's what you're asking to do, is to meld all of these special permits?
If I can, Mr. Chairman, an example would be, if you look at the way this is set up in the zoning bylaw.
I thought I was asking questions.
He has to address everything to me.
Okay.
Can I continue? Thank you. If you look at the zoning bylaw, and it says in allowed use is office, I'm a chiropractor, I'm an eye doctor, I'm an engineer, I'm a lawyer, it's an office use. It's a permitted use. So, manufacturing, what Mr. Plunkett's saying is, when you get that use, it should be allowed on the entire site. We're backing that off and saying, we're not going to overburden the site with more than 70%. And the only reason 70% is because a carpenter, a window installer, and a general contractor, those are all considered contractors. So if we just said contractor could only be 10% of the building, then you just wouldn't be able to have a carpenter and one staller, which I don't think anybody has a problem with. Window guy and another staller, someone else and another staller. So, and maybe, it, it sounds a little confusing, because one of the things that it says in there, products sold, I mean, you can manufacture something, and if you have manufacturing allowed, but you can't sell it. So in this case, we get someone who manufactures water filters, and he can sell them on the premises. It's not like they're building air conditioners, and you can go and buy an air conditioner there, so. It's, it's, the wording makes it sound more onerous than it really is.
Okay. Um, and, Mr. Phelan, this has nothing to do with necessarily your specific property. I am in the neighborhood, but this is more about the process and what we're trying to do here. So, right now, we have a HI-1 piece of property per the, the zoning bylaw change from the last town meeting. So that triggers certain uses that can happen that couldn't happen before, just like the automotive uses that they had. So, it, it appears that there's certain tenants that are currently non-compliant, right? You're trying to make that right, and I appreciate that. This is not about not trying to make that right. This is about the process, and this is about how the Planning Board reviews the process and sets precedence in this town for how this situation is handled, and how it will be handled in the future, and the possibility for litigation in the future. Not necessarily with Mr. Phelan's property, but if we do it here, we're going to have to do it everywhere else, and it's up to the Planning Board to make the vote and either keep things the way they are, or potentially open up the, open up the, the town and the citizens to exposure. And all I'm asking you to do is to vote against this, to keep the system that we have in place, allow the property owner to submit his 15 special use permit applications, one after the other, and you can approve, you can approve every single one of them, right after it. And we will have an opportunity, as citizens, to be heard, if we want to be heard or not. If you vote in favor of this, you will take our rights to be heard on a special permit away from us. Please don't do that. Thank you.
Just, again, just for clarifications, use special permit, not a special permit. Just so we're using the terminology correctly.
Okay. Use special permit. Thank you.
Anyone else with any questions? Come on up. State your name and address for the record. The floor is yours.
Hi, my name's Crystal Psalm. I live at 141 Carter Street, so just, very short from there. Um, I won't be quite as long, most of my questions are answered, but I want to go on record with my concerns as well, and my concerns are similar to several that have been expressed already. I just sat here in this meeting, and I listened to you talk about the area around Breakaway Sports, and I felt really reassured as a resident, knowing that the Planning Board is reviewing the safety of our neighborhoods, the safety of commercial properties, the safety of our children, reviewing every single detail very carefully, and that things like this are allowed to be brought up, so that I, as a resident, can know what's going to be going on right down the street from my house. I have two little boys, we have lots of kids in the neighborhood, it's a dead-end neighborhood that we're, you know, we're walking on the street and such, you know, traffic can be a concern. I want to know that every use that's actually being brought up as a, a use is being reviewed as carefully as what you just reviewed the other cases before this, talking about public safety. So, my concern is the same, granting the, the use case permits, as other permit uses, that are already in place, and getting things up to code is one thing, but in advance granting use cases that don't actually have a use case yet, and can't actually be reviewed carefully, that concerns me a lot as well. I just, I'm very concerned about not being able to hear what's going to be going on, not having the oversight of the Planning Board, looking carefully at each of those individual cases. So, um, similar to Mr. Ricker, and, and a few of you have expressed other concerns, I'm just concerned about the advance and, and opening up that precedent of, of not being able to review each case as it comes up. Thank you.
Okay. All right. So, anyone else in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns at this time? All right, I'll bring it back to the board. Um, Mr. Plunkett, go ahead.
Just, you know, again, to the, the point of the bylaw, in, in fact, we are doing what the bylaw says. We're reviewing the requested special permits, specific to the site, and determine whether they're appropriate or not. We're not listing every use special permit that may be allowed in an HI-1 district, because there probably are those that wouldn't be appropriate for, for this site. We're saying that those that were requesting are appropriate. Uh, you know, the bylaw does not say that for each tenant per se, they, it's actually more related to the site, not to the tenant. Obviously, you need, you know, the, the, the use has to be, you know, would be associated with a tenant, but, you know, it, it's, it's more relative to the site itself, and the question whether the special permits that were requested are appropriate. One issue that, you know, again, that, uh, if, I know, years ago, when there were other people on the board, um, I don't know who I might be referring to.
Yeah, right.
But, uh, you know, there, there were situations where, you know, where in addition to the question of, you know, we put a limitation on the use, and the question is if there is of, if any of the uses, uh, you know, that are currently there are changed, if, even if we could have something in there, a, an administrative review by the board, just to try, you know, again, we're, we're dealing with the reality of, um, you know, real world, uh, business. And, and, and I don't think that the use special permit, other than what we talked about tonight, okay, are, what are appropriate for this site? And I think that everything we listed was appropriate for the site. But, you know, so if you have a change, you know, the question is, yeah, hold on, and we'll be back to you in two months. You know, is it, is it appropriate then that we would say that if there's any, you know, in addition to that 70% proviso, that if there is any, uh, change of usage at the site, even in line with what we're requesting, you know, tenant-specific, that we would have the ability to come in and notify the board, just so that they would have the ability to, you know, say, hey, we want to look at this further, or, uh, you know, along those lines.
So let me ask you on, on that, though. I mean, if we did, if you did do that as like sort of administrative, you know, you came in and said, okay, here's what's changed, you know, whatever, what, what would the people be able to do, though? I mean, if we said, we don't like that, we've already said you can do it, though, right?
Yeah.
So I mean, other than you informing us, there really wouldn't be much more for us to do, at that point.
Um, I, I'm.
I mean, we could look at you real mean, but, I mean, other than that.
No.
No.
No. Because if it was, if it was agreed upon to have administrative review, it's like, going back to my widget, you know? Widget A, you don't have a problem with, but widget B, you do. So you say, you know what, this might need further things, or come in for a vote for, like a substantial change type of thing, you know? It's, it's all the items that you kind of under.
But, but my question then is, that, that almost defeats the purpose of what you, I mean, other than administrative are a lot quicker, but.
Administrative, because you go on a Thursday, say, hey, look, we've got a tenant who's looking to come in, and they're going to be, you know, getting the widget manufacturing. We come before the board and just say, yeah, that's fine, rather than telling the person, wait for two months, we were able to come in, and if you say, no, I don't like widgets, you're going to have to come in as a full-blown special permit hearing, then we have to go to the person, say, sorry, we can't deal with you, because, uh, again, what we're trying to do is get some sense of.
As a compromise, I, I don't necessarily have an issue with that. At, at least it gives us some additional sort of trigger point.
Yeah.
Um, you know, at least from my perspective, I mean, the 70% thing, I think, is important. I think one other thing that I would, if this goes forward, that I would request, though, is these, uh, if we do the administrative, I guess it takes care of, but I would like, you know, this is a big site, this 36 units, um, if we do this sort of grant in advance, um, that we're talking about here for these uses, I would probably request that, you know, maybe like, I don't know whether it be yearly or something, that the, that the, the owner just submit a sheet like you gave us, of who does what there, that you gave, you know, in the original, just for the file? That way, if somebody wanted to just quick reference, they don't have to go walk by the site and try to figure out who's doing what.
Make it a condition.
That, no, I'm, I'm suggesting it as a condition, I'm saying.
Yeah, that, that, I think Joe would be happy to do that.
Okay, so that's.
He has, he has track of who I would turn it out.
So, um, you know, I, I kind of, I want to get to, I want to get to, to yes on this, in that Mr. Cuco brought the point up, and I've never not thought this before, but Mr. Cuco mentioned it, and I, I know we've had this in other sites. The way it stands now, your example of a chiropractor, and then a optometrist, or whatever, each time that would have triggered you having to come back and ask for a use special permit, even if all you did was go from a chiropractor to an optometrist in the exact same space, and nothing changed. So, in that case, I don't see how that's sensible, that we have to do that, um, every single time, you know, when nothing's really changed. Um, you know, the, the limited number.
And I think that, that's how it's been, again, to get to the point, I think that's how it's been applied, but if you look at the bylaws, I don't think that that's what the bylaw actually says. The bylaw doesn't say tenant-specific, the bylaw says site-specific. And so, you know, when people are saying, oh, we're going away from the, from the bylaw, truthfully, I'm saying, no, we're not. You know, you still have all the triggers for the, you know, for the site plan special permits, this regular special permit. This is nothing more than a use special permit, and, you know, and does not negate all the other triggers that still exist under the bylaws.
Mm-hmm.
If someone came in from one that we haven't asked for, we'd have to go through the.
Ms. Phelan?
Yeah, I understand something, I'm just learning this process, so. If, uh, if you just came in with these buildings, not constructed, with a plan such as this, proper setbacks and everything, and you, and you're in that zone, and you want to use this zone for the uses that the zone allows. When you go for a building permit, you come, you come here, you build a, you build a site, site plan special permit, then you come in, then you, Mr. Phelan comes in with tenant A, tenant B, they go to the building inspector, and they say, uh, what are you doing here? Yep, you're all set. You get a permit to do, you know, the work inside. So, how is this different, other than the buildings are already built?
I, I suppose in, in that sense, from the perspective of what the bylaw says, that you have to ask first for permission to have those uses specific to that site, there, there is no difference.
That's right.
That then the building inspector says, oh, okay, they allowed you for this use, they allowed you for that use, they allowed you for that use, okay, comply and do what, what you have to do. And, and again, you know, we, you know, to, to just hit home that the fact that, you know, this is not taking every special permit use in this zone and saying, oh, we, we want everything, we want everything. No, we're, we're not saying that. We, we, we have the specific request that we say are appropriate and compatible with this specific site, and that's the intent of the zoning bylaw.
That's why I don't think it's as confusing as it seems. Yeah. Thank you.
Let me ask one other question, and I'm not sure I know the, the absolute answer, so I'll, I'll ask it and see what you say. If, under the current format, the way it is now, if, for example, you had the chiropractor in there, if between the time that chiropractor's in there, town meeting removes that as an option in that space, or in that zone, going forward, when the chiropractor leaves, if you tried to bring in the optometrist, you'd be told no. Okay? No?
Two years. If they abandon the use, it's a two-year tolling period. So if they abandon the use and two-year passes, they can't bring it back in, but if it's not abandoned for two years, they can bring it in.
Okay, so like a modified grandfathering?
Right.
Sort of, okay. That was going to be my question, is that in this version, it feels like we'd be permanently installing a grandfather for all those ones that we do, even if town meeting were then to remove those as options. But I guess that's not really the case because of the two-year tolling. So unless you let it roll out of the two-year tolling, it wouldn't matter. So that's, okay, that is my question.
If there is a condition where they have to do it yearly, then we'll know what uses are there when.
Right. Okay, all right. Any other questions or comments from anyone?
Yeah, Mr. Mr. I have a comment. I mean, um, if I'm reading this correctly, one of the uses you need to, okay, is the indoor commercial recreation, right, Mr. Plunkett?
Yes.
That's one of them, right? So, if we don't approve this, for some reason, the gymnastics place would never be able to be there.
Correct.
Correct?
Yeah.
I mean, and some of the other ones that are there will not be allowed to be there. So my concern is that we not be user-friendly as far as businesses that are there. I haven't heard one issue about the site being, had any problems down there at all. And I'm sure Mr. Phelan has been the reason behind that, you know? And unfortunately, we have the situation in front of us. My biggest concern is that we get the permits, and, and the code violations that may exist there, approved, before we go any farther, and any safety violations that are there at the site. So, not that I have heard there are any, but I want to get most of those into, into, into perspective and done before anybody gets hurt down there, so, but.
And again, that's, that's what we've done with the town council, building commissioner, uh.
And that's what I see here with the letter.
Plan and development.
That, that has to be done, and done expeditiously.
That's a condition.
Right.
Yeah, and, and the, I, I doubt that anyone else with a site like this sort has had the architect go through with a fine-tooth comb, and then sit down with the building commissioner, and go over everything that was done with a fine-tooth comb, which is, you know, like I say, this is, this is not typical of sites of this sort. And, you know, so, you know, first impression might be, oh, what's going on? But take, take in mind that, you know, this, this is something that we first filed, I think in August, and one of the reasons for the multiple extensions were, was because we're having this type of extensive and intensive review of the premises.
Sure.
And, and I think you have to give credit for Mr., to Mr. Phelan, that said, hey, you tell me whatever it is you want me to do, and he went out, he got the architect, he got one of the best, uh, you know, organizations. And he went out, he got the architect, he got one of the best, you know, organizations in the area with Gavin and Sullivan, and, you know, it, it hasn't been cheap.
Anyone else?
Just one thing. I mean, I, I, I understand what Mr. Phelan's doing, and I, and I, I understand where, you know, the chicken and the egg thing here. The bylaw, I mean, when I looked at, the bylaw states the premises, the building. And yet, and I understand the resident concerned with not what's there today, what may be there tomorrow. And, and then we turn around and we have a, a letter from the town council saying it's okay to do this. So it, it, it puts this board in a situation to open it up. What's the next development that comes in that, we are setting a precedent here, and I, believe me, I know this is, we're trying to do this site-specific, but any good attorney is gonna come in and say, "Well, site-specific or not, you allowed this on 120 Lumber Lane, why can't I do this on X Street?" And I'm just concerned that, that town council is not looking at that as being a concern and taking, and putting this back on the board. I mean, I do li, I understand the way the bylaw reads, but it takes that ability for an abutter to take those, that individual, whether it be the steel manufacturer or a recreation center. Recreation could be anything. You can, you decide to close all those other places up, a recreation center comes down there, it creates significant more traffic if we decide that you're gonna put another ice rink down there. Look what we just went through with one ice rink with traffic. So I'm concerned what's gonna happen down the road, and it, it, by doing this, we eliminate what any abutter has to say, other than coming back and us bringing us back in.
The one thing I'd say, this, this is what I was just gonna say, if you did an ice rink, you're gonna trigger something different.
If you do an ice rink or another recreation, another recreation facility.
A big recreation is gonna trigger, though, site plan. That's the only thing. So I mean, to Mr. Plunkett's point, because, you know, I, I like to hit you and then sometimes help you.
No, I understand.
So, you know, it, there are, there are some protections from larger sudden changes that, that Mr. Plunkett's point is correct. I would, and again, I'll be a devil's advocate to their point also, you know, just to hash it out, is that we're also not approving all the possible uses. We could've just gone right across the board and been done, well, they're not doing that. It's kind of cherry picking out some and saying, "Board, do you feel comfortable saying that these, if they just keep changing hands, are not ones you really need to, you know, go crazy about each and every time?" To my point, the chiropractor versus the optometrist, you know, versus the psychologist, or, you know what I mean? So I think if, 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 to argue the point, is, if they, if there's an, if there's a use they're asking for that you feel uncomfortable with, we could call that out and say, "Hmm." But other than that, I would say that we still are in a reasonable position to say, "We didn't just open the floodgates. We're still gonna look at this individually and, you know, if someone were to come in with this, say, 'Well, but in that, in that site, we don't feel comfortable giving A, B, and C, we might only feel comfortable with A or A and B,' you know?" Again, this just devil's advocate to the point.
And, and Mr. Chairman, relative to, you know, so-called open up the floodgates, if someone wants to come in and say, "Hey, you spend the next three months, get a architect and go through your site with a fine-tooth comb and sit down with the building commissioner and go over every square inch of your site," I don't see that that's a detriment to the town. You know, this, this is not something that we, you know, that we're coming in here as a half-hazard, "Hey, you know what we'd like to do? We'd like to, you know, do this, that, and the other thing." This is, you know, this is something, these conditions that we're saying, "Yes, please incorporate them into the decision of the planning board," these are something that, you know, hey, I, I, I think that you'd have a lot of people that would probably shrink away from, "Oh, jeez, I'm not gonna do that. I'm not gonna spend that kind of money and time and effort and, you know, I'm gonna let this, you know, I'm not gonna deal with this." You know, we, we've been dealing, we, we've been doing a comprehensive review that probably no other site in town has undergone like this one here. So I, I don't see that being a detriment to the town. If every, if every site wants to come in and do what, what's happened here, I would say the town would be a lot better off, so...
If, under the administrative action, can you address if there's a concern at the time of the site and under the administrative action, what is the recourse if a resident does come in at that point?
Well, I, well, one, I'd say they can't because it's an administrative action, but I would say that my, my suggestion was gonna be that we treat it the same way we treat a non-substantial change, the way the board views it, would basically, you know, make, accept it as a non, even though it's not exactly what it is, but we treat it the same way, so it's simple majority of the board, just simply saying, you know, "This, this use, you know, is, is not a significant enough problem that it's gonna trigger further, further viewing."
The optometrist chiropractor.
Right, otherwise, if that's not the goal, then you're gonna come in for a regularly use, use special permit in the older fashion. Is that acceptable to...
Yes.
So does that, I feel like that's, that's, it's a little bit of a...
It gives us a little bit of protection under that. I mean, unfortunately, the way the bylaw reads, it's not specific to the business, it's specific to the site. And we have a letter from the attorney that is giving us the ability to approve that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else from anyone on the floor?
All right, Mr. Chairman.
All right, so at this time, what is the pleasure of the board?
Motion to close the hearing.
Continue it to the next.
No, it's, this predates the...
So this predates the...
This predates the new process, so if we want to move forward, we can do it now. So, motion to close? Motion made, do it in second?
Second.
Motion made in second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. So as to the use special permit as submitted, do we have a motion?
So move.
All right. All right, we gotta go a little, we gotta go a little deeper on that one. So the conditions would include, the conditions submitted this evening from, is this town council? Town council. The additional condition of if at any point, more than 70% of the site would be a single use.
Square footage.
Square footage. By, by square footage. Then at that point, they have to come back in for a use special permit for that. And, what else?
Annual...
Oh, the, the annual submittal of what the site, you know, what the site breaks down as by use. And the last one is that the changes will be used, will be done as administrative action with the board reviewing those in the same manner that they do non-substantial changes.
Is that for every tenant? Is, so is that at the time of building permit application?
I think so, yeah. I mean, it's quick enough that, you know, building permit application.
As part of the building permit application for the new, it would create the administrative action that would give the ability to address if anything came up.
That, that, yeah, that should be quick enough, so...
Yeah, I think it, what it does is also to...
Yeah.
And if I may, I mean, obviously, people in the audience, you know, I mean, I know you're in the neighborhood and pay attention to it, is, you know, continue to monitor it, and that gives you the ability to see if there's building permits and other things happening with the site. So if there is something that is arising, that there is a traffic issue, or if there is a concern that something happens, then you can bring that to the board and we can sit with the applicant at the time and address it. And it seems that Mr. Phelan has, you know, I've been down the site a couple times, it, it's cleaned up, he keeps, you know, and hopefully, we'll, that'll continue.
I think, too, the, the yearly submission will help because that way, if a resident wants to come down, they have a quick sheet to look at as opposed to trying to sift through the file. That's why I want to make sure that that's kept up to date.
And that will be a staffed due for it.
All right, so that is our motion, and our motion is seconded. Correct? All right, motion made in second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to agenda item H, 135 Pleasant Street. This is the continuation of the Town of Tewksbury Site Plan Special Permit for the elementary school. All right, we'll, um...
Can we take a three second?
We'll take, we'll take a, we'll take a quick five-minute break.
Sure.
While you guys set up and...
Yeah.
All right, welcome back. We will call the meeting back to order. The next item on the agenda is agenda item H, 135 Pleasant Street, the elementary school. Town of Tewksbury Site Plan Special Permit Continued from our 127 meeting. Gentlemen, if you state your names to the record, the floor will be yours.
Certainly, thank you. Peter Collins, CBRE Herry.
Bill Beatrice, Plansburg Architects.
Faisal Husani, NCH Engineering Traffic.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, our committee, uh, excuse me, board members. For consideration, on behalf of the Town of Tewksbury and the Elementary School Building Committee, as the owners' project manager, may I, may we have the, the project team provide a synopsis as to the presentation and follow-up from our last meeting that we had on January 27th as a matter of, to allow Mr. Ryder to be informed on, and with continued participation, if that's acceptable.
The, the chair accepts the request of the petitioner. If you would provide that...
Sure, certainly.
...review of our last meeting at this time?
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, committee, board members. Just as, again, a synopsis, the project team is still working with the town engineer on the review of the project design. The town engineer has hired a traffic consultant as a peer review of the submitted traffic report. A board member during the last meeting mentioned the traffic report presented during the January 13th meeting was most helpful and answered several questions. Also, during the last meeting, a board member asked how many cars would be in the queue as they exit the site. The traffic engineer at the, at the table here stated 16 feet of queuing would be allowed, or would be in place, excuse me. Another board member suggested that more graphics with arrows and symbols and signage on the site plan show, would, would help show better traffic flow for board members to understand the flow of traffic. The, the traffic engineer and the architect and designer agreed with that. A board member asked if there are two lanes exiting the site, each for a left turn and right turn, and the project architect said, "Yes, there is." A board member asked how far back from the drop-off area, excuse me, from the drop-off area, will the left and right turning lanes start? The traffic engineer indicated just after the drop-off area these turning lanes would begin. A board member asked or stated additional signage should be added to the middle lane of the parking lot near the drop-off area to prevent parents from dropping off students. The project architect agreed additional signage will be added. A resident of the community asked if the ring road was discussed at community outreach meetings. The OPM indicated yes. The same resident asked if there was any considerations for a traffic light. The OPM stated no. A resident of the community asked if the floodplain issue has been resolved. The civil engineer at the hearing here mentioned the project team is still waiting for FEMA's response. The same resident asked or stated that DEP was looking at the replicated wetlands. The OPM indicated there were no identified issues from DEP regarding the wetland, replicated wetlands at that time. The same resident asked about the change in the quantity of the subsurface stormwater detention drains. The civil engineer at the hearing mentioned the quantity of storm drains has been reduced from 10 to 7 due to the revised calculations based on the results of the soil test pits. The same resident asked about the schedule. The OPM stated the project team is working on the construction schedule. Briefly, those were my notes of the synopsis of the discussion held at the last meeting.
All right, we'll have you...
The OPM stated the project team is working on the construction schedule. Briefly, those were my notes of the synopsis of the discussion held at the last meeting.
All right, we'll have you submit that synopsis for the record.
Sure.
That will conclude the review mini-hearing for last, our last meeting, which will allow Mr. Ryder to
Thank you.
...continue to be present and participate in everything going forward from this point. And so with that, we'll start the hearing for this evening
Certainly.
...with the new information.
Certainly. I will turn it over to the project architect, Bill Beaches, from Flansburgh, and Faisal, the traffic engineer from Niche Engineering, on the results of the last discussion.
Thank you, thank you. So, as requested, we have some additional exhibits regarding traffic, so I think we'll just jump right into it, and I'll have, I'll let Faisal take it over from here.
Thank you, thank you, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. So, we went back, just to give you an update since the last meeting.
Can I make one, are you going to be talking about that right there?
That's correct.
If you want to take the microphone, you can go ahead and go right over there. That way you can
Point.
...point to whatever it is you wanted to, right from the plan. You can take it right out.
I can take it out.
There you go.
Perfect, thank you. So, so we went and we prepared our diagrams to show graphically the amount of queuing that we're going to have accessing the site and egressing the site or exiting the site. As you can see, the, for orientation, the north is going in this direction, so if we assume that the exit roadway is really in the eastbound direction, and then the entry is in the westbound direction. And this is kind of the ring road that goes all the way around it. For the existing condition, the, because of the limitation of the area for drop-off and pickup for the parents, the amount of queuing goes technically about 23 cars, that was observed in the field, and it goes about a couple cars right on Pleasant Street, so it kind of spill over Pleasant Street. And that's based on the average, and it does fluctuate sometime, maybe more, sometime less. And with the new configuration, as you can see, we have a very long roadway, about more than 2,000 dinner feet, and then, so we will not have that issue in the future. On the exit point, so the drop-off area is right, right in here, and then right after it, we have the exit, which about, from this point to the, to the stop line or stop bar, is about 210 feet, 220 feet. And then the amount of queuing, based on the calculation that we have done, is about 10 cars. So, to measure that in distance, you usually use about 22 feet per car. So, technically, we have adequate distance from the area that, you know, merged between the parking area and the drop-off area up to the stop bar. And because there, we have two lanes, one will be for the right turn only, and one for the left turn only. And those will be marked in the paper markings. You can see the arrows with the only on it, and then you also will have signs. One, it has to be, will be near the stop bar, which indicates that the right lane must turn right, the left lane must turn left. And in advance to that, we're going to put other signs too, either graphically to show the arrows that the right to the right, left to the left, or we repeat the same sign says right turn only and left turn only. So, that will be, we did not show all these signs, we didn't want to clutter this, but eventually, as the design progresses, all the regulation and all the warning will be added to the, to the site. So, so from, from our calculation perspective, is that we are not going to have any problem in terms of the backup that we are seeing today.
I don't think
So, that will be resolved between the two. And since the last time, as I was mentioning, that we have peer reviewer, VAI, was hired by the town. It's, I mean, I've known them for many, many, many years. They're reputable traffic engineer, and Jeff Derrick is an excellent traffic engineer. So, Jeff did send us a memo of his comments last Thursday. We took it, we get right on it, we prepared a draft response to his memo by Friday morning. We sent it to him, and then we followed up with a conference call. So, we went item by item, and then it appeared to be that we are not really far apart. He agreed with our explanation for his comments, and his comments were very valid, and we are going to address all of his comments. And then he also was in agreement with our response, preliminary responses to his comments as well. At the end of the discussion, which took less than half an hour, I did ask him if he would inform the town that we are on agreement, and he said he would do so via email. I'm not sure if he did that or not, but definitely, so as it stands right now, we believe that we are on the same page, and we can address all his comments and move forward with the, with the project.
Okay, let's just make a note that we're going to have, make sure our traffic engineers hear the next time. That way we can hear them say that, just on the record for anyone in the audience to hear as well.
So, just to add to that, if, so for our memo, we are verifying, we are addressing some of it. Some of it requires some additional work, which we're going to do. And then by Thursday, we should submit a final version to the peer reviewer and in the town as well.
Okay, that'll work. So, they may have already been in agreement, but we'll have them in for the next meeting. Make sure they hear that, way we can just put that on the record, and if there's anybody in the audience who wants to question our peer reviewer, they can do so at that time. Okay, sorry.
So, that's basically in a nutshell
Okay.
...where we are now.
All right, anything else to add at this point?
I think that's about it in terms of what we had tonight. Of course, obviously, if any questions, we're here to respond.
And only just to add that we are continuing to work with the town engineer on other issues regarding the project site and design, as mentioned.
Okay. One of the questions that we asked last meeting, and thank you for your synopsis. You refreshed my mind. Thank you. We asked for a plan that's going to depict the arrows and the flow, so anybody picking it up will know how it's going to work without being told. When do you think we'll have that?
Well, the, the arrows are on that plan right now.
Okay, but we don't have that yet.
Yeah, yeah. That's correct. As, as we work through the whole process
Okay.
...with the town engineer and finalize the package.
Well, it's updated, fine.
You'll get the updated package that should have that.
Great.
That will have that.
Which, which I believe, Mr. Chairman, board members, should be in the hands of the planning board office by noon on this, this Thursday.
Great, thank you.
All right. All right, so with that, we'll open it up to the board. Mr. Delaney, you're up first this time.
Well, I guess, you know, the question's, 10 cars exiting, left and right, both sides. In other words, there'll be 20 cars that can leave the site.
That's correct.
Correct? Okay, the only question they have is if you have a problem getting out onto Pleasant Street, is that going to affect the backup in the schoolyard? In other words, from the loading area, I suppose we're just backing up the loading area, but is that going to create a difficulty?
If, if let's say for, for any reason that there was an incident on Pleasant Street
Yes.
Right in front of the driveway, definitely is going to impact people from being able to exit the driveway. However, the Pleasant Street is a free flow, so there is no, in general term, there should be no reason why vehicle need to stop in front unless there is an incident, as we're saying. In that situation, there has to be some sort of management. I'm sure like, like the police will be there to assist in terms of, you know, helping the traffic to maneuver.
Okay, but see, the thing is Pleasant Street, around that time of day, there's a, there's a lot of traffic on Pleasant Street. Okay, so the thing is, the people that are going left and right, we're going to have to wait until that traffic clears. The thing I'm concerned about is the loading and unloading area. That's going to, if these cars can't just go out in a flow, they're going to back up inside the schoolyard.
But, so, so based on the numbers, based on our counts, we did count traffic on Pleasant Street, and we count, we had the traffic part of the, with being part of the school generated. And we do some analysis, and then we come up what we call 95th percentile queuing, which means is the 95th percent of the time that we're going to have that much of queuing. And none of the analysis indicated that we're going to have that kind of backup to gridlock, you know, the rest of the roadway. And that's based on the numbers.
The study, the study to me was very good. I didn't know you figured in accidents either. No, I guess you even figure in how many accidents there might be at one intersection or another.
Yeah, we have to do like the safety evaluation for any intersection, and then there are, there is data, like MassDOT does publish data. And one thing about this, this site, when we did the report in 2018, we had the accident up to 2018. Now we are in 2020, so we have the data in 2019. Part of our exercise now, we're going to go back and bring the 2019 crash data, so we'll see if anything has changed since 2018.
Well, Mr. Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, just for the record, you worked for the project engineer, correct?
I, I am a subconsultant to the project engineer, yes.
For your plan, for your team, right? So, so we will be seeing, hearing from the Vanessa Associates another time, right?
Possibly, yeah.
There's a peer.
Peer, yeah.
Peer reviewer, yeah.
Just so that we have that on record, so. So, reading the information over the weekend, very impressed with some of the information from Vanessa Associates as far as you guys working together to combat some of the questions back and forth, so very detailed, some great ideas. So, a couple of questions I have for you tonight would be, do you expect the ring road to deter parents from dropping off kids?
I don't think so. The, the ring road will be, will be designed with adequate width, and then in terms of along the way, as you can see, we're having some speed tables
Right.
...to reduce speed. We possibly also can post the speed, and a typical setup like this, it's about 50 miles an hour, and then in addition to that, I don't think there will be any conflict between the parents dropping off and then the traffic.
Yeah, so, no, that's not really my question. My question is, do you think with parents getting into that ring road process, do you think that will deter them having to wait? Having, once they enter that ring road
Yeah.
...they're stuck, they can't get out? So, once they get in, you know, so I'm just, my question is, do you think that's a deterrent?
It's the last part he's missing that I think will clarify it for you. I think the question is, do you, is, is it the impression that it will drive the parents to use the bus as opposed to putting themselves in the ring? Is that, is that accurate?
Yeah.
Yes, exactly.
I mean, based on, you know, I don't think they would be allowed to use the bus.
No, no, I'm saying
No.
Instead of dropping their kids off, they'll put them on the bus.
Oh, they put them on the bus.
Because of the time involved going around and having, once they get in, they get, because once you're in, you're locked in, you can't back out. You're, you're set till the, till you drop off.
And it's not unusual setup. I mean, you see a lot of schools like that where you go in and you have to look all the way around
Sure.
...to be able to drop off. In terms of the buses, I mean, I don't know what the policy is, and I know like from where I live, it's like there's a policy if, if you are away, you know, two miles, then, then you'll have school, students using the bus, and if you are near, closer, then you don't. So, again, it's
I think it's a difficult question for us to answer. I don't know how it would, I don't know how we would answer this.
This is the reverse of what I said before, which is, your numbers can do whatever they want, but now real life kicks in, and I can tell you right now, there's a decent chance I would tell my kids, get on the bus, because I'm not driving through there.
Right.
Yeah.
Because you could get tied in there.
I'll go with Buddy. At the doing, I mean, I've done that, it's a smaller loop, not designed
Right.
...the doing has currently.
Right.
Pulls you in by the old schoolhouse, loops you around. It's about six minutes. It could be up to 15 if you get the little kid that doesn't want to get off the bus that day.
Right.
So
Yeah.
...my kids take the bus because of that, so I'll tell you that. It really, it helps.
All right, so one of the other questions I seen in this report, this, we got over the weekend, was sporting events.
Right.
So, how much more traffic is going to be generated there? And are we, are we planned accordingly for sporting events at that site? Because again, they're all going in, parking on, in the, on the left-hand side, in other areas as well, and then once we leave, they also are going into that loop to get in and get out, so.
That's correct. And we have not qualified is like at a sporting event, how much it will generate and the number of vehicles that will come in, because we need, we need all the information to figure out what kind of, the level of attendance to that sporting event. Physically, I mean, the space, you know, as you can see, we have a lot of parking areas. We can also have the roadway designed in a way that you can have, you know, vehicles stop, park alongside the ring road, and that to absorb that kind of demand for, for vehicles. Then, then that'll, you know, prevent people from going, let's say, on Pleasant Street to park there and come in.
Right.
And we have a lot of space, I mean, within the site, and so we would definitely look into that and qualify some level of
Okay, because that's going to be a concern. I think the seating capacity at the, at the facility is 1,500, right? Correct? So
That, that was one of the questions the peer reviewer
There's going to be a lot of cars, because they're not on school buses, and they're going to be attending the game, so.
Sure.
But we have a good football program, so that's going to even draw more, so. So, my other question, which is interesting, is bicycles. Now, do you foresee bicycles being a way of students really attending school? I mean
Yeah, the answer is yes.
That's just a general question for
The answer is
Because that's going to add to, you know, cars trafficking, exiting, where are they going to park, where are they going to go, how do they get dropped off before, or how do they get into the facility, so.
Yeah, I mean, there are two programs. One of the programs is really you want to, you try to invite the all modes of transportation to get in, like the walkers who can walk to the school, the using bicycles, and then using the vehicle or the bus. There are other programs like Safe Route to School, where the, you know, you can get funds to improve sidewalks on the streets and try to, you know, encourage people who live nearby to walk to the school as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
So, Bill, what do you think? I mean
I mean, we're going to provide bike racks as part of the project, but, I mean, given the age group of the kids, I'm not sure how many
That was my other concern, I mean
...students are going to be actually biking to school.
Exactly, so I mean, so I didn't know if that's going to be an issue or not, but I mean, even, I mean, with them, if they were on the sidewalk coming to the school, I mean, it's going to cause some type of
I don't, I don't see it as being
Stoppage of
I don't see it as being an issue. I mean, there are sidewalks all over from, from Pleasance, from Pleasant Street to get you up to the entrance to the school, so.
Right.
I mean, we've accommodated for that. I don't, I don't foresee it as being a big issue though, given the age
It was interesting that it was in the report
Yeah.
...that bicycles were, were brought up as a, as a concern. I'm like, well, how would they get in? You know, and I know you provide bike racks, but still, how would they get into the site?
Yeah, there's, there's sidewalks from Pleasant Street all along that will bring you right in. There's sidewalks from the various parking lots to bring you into the school as well.
Yeah, but if they come down Pleasant Street on a, on a bicycle, now they're coming to the exit ramp where people exit right and left.
Yep.
So, I mean, where do they go? They're not going into the loop.
Yeah, I know.
But, so, just a, just a question I had for someone that is living close by and doesn't want to walk and wants to take his bike to school, well, we should be thinking ahead, proactive as far as that, rather than reactive, so.
Sure.
With that, I'm all set, and I look forward to the peer review getting resolved, and I'm glad you guys are that close as far as, you know, working together. So, that's a good sign, so, thank you.
Mr. Powell.
Very short and sweet. Until I see the layout of, so that in my mind, the layout of the traffic, I'm going to reserve my time for questions at a later date, after we receive them this, at the end of this week.
Sure.
Yeah, okay.
That, that would be the, the plan, showing all the pavement markings
Right.
...and all the signage locations.
I just want to make sure that both sides of the table are on the same page.
Sure.
All right, thank you. I'm all set.
Mr. Ryder.
Thank you. I've reviewed this a few times, I've read the traffic board multiple times. I mean, you've taken everything into consideration, also with, with some of the items that the
Also with, with some of the items that the board has brought up with additional signing as well as the pavement markings, I think are going to help move traffic on the property and then ultimately off the property. One thing to Mr. Fertaglia's question is, sporting event, there will be a police detail like there is now. So that will help mitigate traffic in and out. There will be more parking than there is currently on the site with the loop road being able to park there. Um, so I think that may mitigate some of the parking on Pleasant Street. During some of the games, the, the larger, larger, more competitive games, I, I, I think that's unpredictable. Um, but I think having, the way the loop goes now, I think it's a little bit easier with the details that are gonna be there during that event is gonna help move traffic in and out of that. Specifically with that right and left turn coming out. I think you'll see more people taking the right instead of that left to go to the, the traffic signal just to eliminate having a pileup there. But I, I too look forward to seeing the full set and the peer review. But, great job, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, as, as far as, you know, the, the queuing up on the, the map, appreciate that being added as a, you know, as a reference point for us. But I just wanna highlight from our previous discussions, because it wasn't on there, but what you're showing there is how many will fit, which is ten on each side. But when we discussed it before, less than ten is how many you actually anticipate queuing up on a normal morning. So ten's the max of what fits there, not what you predict will be the likely queue of cars.
That's what being predicted.
Ten?
Ten.
Oh, I, from the last meeting, it was less than that.
Huh? Donald, seven and three, you're correct. Yeah, I think you're right.
Yeah, it's not ten. Ten's how many fit in that, that piece.
So, I believe it was, I believe it was seven.
Right.
Is that what fits there or?
So my, my clarification was, as I understood it, your prediction for how many cars will queue up in the morning trying to get out was, was less than what's shown there. That's just how many will fit in that piece, in that section, correct?
For the morning coming up, I think is that the morning?
This is the morning, yeah.
That's AM, yeah.
This is the morning.
No, these are the actual numbers.
So you think ten cars will queue up?
Yes.
Huh?
On each side?
On each side?
No, no, on, on the right side will be four cars.
But that was the number, because I thought the number was less, no?
The less number was for the afternoon.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, and the other thing, and I know I said this last time, you, you did your numbers based on both schools opening and closing at the same time, which they don't.
No.
Which means the number is probably about half of what you're predicting, give or take.
Right.
Give or take. So ten is what will fit in that whole piece right there. If you get to ten, predictively, it's less, it's, it should be a little less than that because only one school will be coming in at a given time.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
If, if we go ahead and say that, assume that they gotta be.
You gotta come near a microphone though, at least one of them.
Scattered and, and it's gonna be assumptions, you know?
Right.
It doesn't look, you know, so rather to be on the conservative side all the time.
Right, and no, I'm, I'm fine with using the, the, making it doubly bad as far as, you know, what it could be. I'm just trying to just throw, so it ends up on the record if someone tries to look and ask, you know, okay, you mean, there's gonna be ten cars there? Well, no, ten cars is what you'd predict if both schools opened at the same time. They do not. They're staggered. So from that perspective, ten is an unlikely number, but ten would fit even if you got to ten.
That's correct.
That, that's what I think was important was, there's a little more wiggle room than what might be presented there because you're not gonna open both schools at the same time.
Yes, and the ten that you mentioned is the worst case.
Right.
Is that ninety-five, fifty percent of the time.
Worst case and it's both schools opening at the same time. So, you know, ideally it'll be less than that, which means you won't even need the entire space to queue on the left. The right doesn't expect to queue that long anyways, under any circumstance, even the worst one. As far as the sporting, I, I was, make the same point, which is the details help the cars get in and out to begin with and they're always gonna have to be there for pretty much any sporting event. So that's, that's a good thing. And also to Mr. Ryder's point, there's more parking on there, so you're gonna have more people on site than we currently have that now either park out on the road, which we, you know, most have been told not to because the signs are up, so they take their chances. But the rest park down at the high school and, you know, walk up or, on those rare occasions when it's a big game, they might run a shuttle that comes up and drops off, which would be able to use the bus loop if that's the case.
We have about three hundred and fifty-three parking spaces in a campus, plus about sixty, um, spaces for the, on the ring road, you know, they can, they can use that while they're parked. People can go around the queue.
There's, there's parking around the, the ring?
There is not, but it's, it's available.
We talked about, you know, we talked about in the big, early stages, uh, early stages, that there was the ability that had, you could use that as additional parking and it was wide enough that we could get an ambulance or fire truck or things of that apparatus around.
It's twenty-four feet wide, there'd be shoulder parking, if you will.
All right.
Yep.
So more of sort of not the, not your intent, but it's possible, much like it is currently where people kinda invent some spaces down towards the end of the.
Ultimately, you could put, you could put players and coaches along that road and keep that accessible and still keep the three hundred and fifty-three parking spots for visitors.
I mean, e- either way, it's more than what it is now and somehow we managed to get now to work, so.
Do you know, Peter, do you know the number of what we have currently? I, off the top, I have it.
Currently on, on.
On this, on the Ryan site right now.
On the Ryan? No, no.
The existing.
Existing conditions.
Just a point of reference, we'll know the number of what we currently have versus.
It's in the, it's in his report.
And just, this is a question because we're, we're looking at the, the overhead here, but I've never asked, but how is the, how is the stadium enclosed? Fenced around it?
It is fenced.
All the way around, right?
It is fenced.
With ticket entrances or whatever somewhere, okay.
I'll, I'll let Bill take, take this one.
So, um, yeah, the, the bleachers and the field will all be fenced and this is the field house and, and this fence will come around and kinda connect the field, connect to the field house. And then you actually enter through the field house into the complex.
Okay.
So it'll be like, um, like a.
Tunnel.
Through the field house where you'll get your tickets and go through the gates.
Bill, Bill, do you wanna mention the second fence? There's two fences, right? The outer fence and then go.
The outer fence and the inner fence. Yeah, the outer, the outer fence surrounds the fence, the, the complex proper. And then around the football field itself is the lower fence.
Steve, it just, they brought to our attention, there's currently a hundred and thirty-two parking spots on the site. So we'll.
Significant.
Significant change of what will be able to house cars during a sporting event.
Yeah, I think that overflow parking lot, the, the bottom there is gonna be a big difference for.
Absolutely, yes.
All right. Otherwise, I'm all set for now. We'll open it up to the audience. Anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns, please come up.
The water thing, talking about water.
State your name for the record and your address and the floor of yours.
Craig Mann, Sixth Monroe Circle, Abutts. You have to be with me. My neighbor had to leave, so she gave me a little school note here, so I'm trying to figure it out right now. At one time, there was a large drainage basin right here in the middle of the field. And this field is astroturf or synthetic. So we're wondering now, now that has been removed, you know, the drainage is probably gonna either stay here on the field or wanna flow off in this direction into the wetlands. Um, her question and my question is, is like, why was that drain removed from the middle of the athletic field?
Can we get Gary to, uh?
I'll, I'll answer. I mean, as Niche stated last, last time they were there, you know, as we've gone through the review process with the town and we've gotten test, uh, we dug, dug our test pits and got the soil data, you know, we have reduced the amount of recharge systems that are needed, but it's all, everything is still captured on site and treated, you know, accordingly. And it's all currently under review with the town right now.
Okay, that was my, my second question was, has the, the town engineer approved this? So it's still in the talking stages right now?
It's, it's.
Yes.
As is the, as is the process that happens. As is the process that happens, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a review process and it's, and it's a lengthy process, so there's a lot of give and take and a lot of back and forth. But it's still under review, to answer your question.
According to her notices, would the drainage be better if that drain was still, was still there? Would the, would the drain in the middle of the field improve that drainage there or, or? That's what the question is.
I feel, I mean, I'm not sure. The only thing I'd say is, it's kind of a subjective question in that if an alternative that they're presenting does the same thing, it's not a better or worse.
It's.
As long as it's not worse.
It's not, it's not worse.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's the plan that they designed.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. There's a, swales now that run right along here behind our property. And we'd like to know like, uh, dimensions on those things. How, how deep are they? How wide are they? How close are they to the, to the, to the, the houses? And how far out do they actually extend? Do they extend only to, to this point here? Or do they go further out? Because we're just worried that what we'll end up with is just a, a ditch here that ends up full of water and doesn't really wanna drain out. And you're draining it out to the point where the houses are, so the people down here all of a sudden are gonna get a big pond forming down at the, the base of the swale.
Well, the, the swales have always been there. I, I don't know exactly how wide they are right now off the top of my head, but the intent of the swales is that it does channel water to the wetlands. It, it, away from your property and the Abutts' property. It's just a way to manage the flow of surface water. Again, it's in the calculations and in the design provided by Niche that are.
Could you?
Town's reviewing.
Could you state that again? You said the swales have always been there? As, as to this project or before this project?
No, 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 as part of the ongoing design of the project. We've had the swell along there for, for a while in our design. You said now there's a swell, so I just wanted, just.
Well, we, we found about it, I would say like, maybe a month ago, that there's a swell going in. Before that, there was the drainage, uh, the, the, the bases. And then you, then you said, well, we're putting in a swell here. And I'm just a little, I'm going a little bit faster in notes here. I'm a little concerned that it's, it's close to the road and it's wintertime and you plow. All you're gonna do is fill up that swell with snow and it's just gonna sit there. And then springtime, all of a sudden, it's just gonna melt down and it's gonna be, like if it's ice further on down, it's just gonna be a big ditch full of water. And my property happens to be above, I mean, below the field. So if it starts sinking down into the soil, it could be coming out of the, the retaining wall that you're gonna be putting in there because it's, it's not gonna go on just completely drain, drain straight down, it's gonna go out in all directions. So we're just a little concerned that you're pushing water down and, and, and not really out. Like, like a nice drain, but it's closely, that's what you say you're gonna put in, would, would dissipate in all directions instead of just channeling it down to one particular area.
The water is, will flow to the wetlands as, as designed, as under review uh, by the town and the town's peer review that's, that's looking at this. Yeah. And CONCOM.
Peter, can you make sure that, that they look at that and make sure that they, if there is an outfall out of that swale, now, does it go back to the detention pond? Or is it diverted away from their property just so it goes into the wetland?
He, he, yes, yes, that has been discussed with the town engineer, with the design engineers, by Niche, Gary Pease behind me, Bill, Beatrice from Plansburgh, the other Niche engineers and the conservation officer, along with the, the respective peer reviews from both the town engineer's side and the conservation. There's been, there's been lengthy discussion about that, so.
You think it'll have to come up?
Maybe I'll have.
You gotta get it on mic.
I'll have Gary Pease from Niche Engineering speak on this, who's a civil engineer as well.
So, yeah, we're in the, we're in the process of several peer reviews right now. Obviously, the, the town engineer's looking at the drawings. The HB is looking at the drawings for, as a peer review through the Conservation Commission. And we've heard comments similar to this already at Conservation Commission hearing last week. We're in the process of tweaking the drawings. We're gonna resubmit later this week with as, um, no planned adverse effect on the Abutts next door. We're gonna, our plan right now is to, is to match what's happening existing off, off-site and to, um, to direct the flows through and, and it's minimal, the, the flow that goes through the swale that's channeling water away or, or parallel to the property line, not towards the Abutts, but parallel to the, to the property, towards the wetland, is not a large amount of water. And we're gonna be matching what's happening existing, so we're not making it any worse. And, um, and, you know, with the comments that we've had from VHB and from the town engineer, we're working through all those details right now.
Okay. Again, I'm sorry, I heard it in the notes. Has the floodplain been taken care of? Floodplain situation been taken care of? Loma.
Yes, Loma, yeah. So the, the. The floodplain situation is a Conservation Commission jurisdictional item to a certain extent in that we have a floodplain elevation on our site, which is a bordering land subject to flooding at elevation one fifteen, which doesn't match exactly what the map shows that FEMA produces. And it's not even close, actually. So now what we have to do in that situation is to talk to the Conservation Commission about using the map or using an elevation. And we usually wanna go with the elevation because the maps are kind of more graphical. CONCOM has agreed to that in what was called an ORAD, which is their Resource Area Delination Permitting Process that we've worked through with them back in last year in order to figure out that floodplain elevation and the floodplain location based on the topography. So we're now working through the CONCOM permitting based on elevation one fifteen. No issues at all with that. Everyone's in agreement. We just have to compensate and work around that flood elevation. The Loma piece, which is when you start to change it at the FEMA level, at the federal level, is something that the building, from what I understand, the building inspector requested because it's a building inspector topic. The federal government, as you can imagine, takes a long time to review things and to get things approved. And the only reason for the change of the mapping with FEMA is to get things to match up and for insurance purposes, if you have a building in the floodplain. Because there's an insurance issue because it's FEMA. And it's, that's why it's a building permit issue. There is no building in the floodplain on this site, but we're going through the Loma process. They asked for more information in the middle of January, which we gave them. And it usually takes a month or two, up to sixty days, after they finally have everything. And it's not easy to get in touch with them, but it takes thirty to sixty days for them to turn around a new map and agree with your map. But it's not something that affects the town permits at all, or the DEP permitting, or the CONCOM permitting. It's all about insurance and FEMA rules. So we're working through that process also.
Yeah, that's the long answer. The short answer is, we're still working through the process, just like we said, uh, last time we were here. You know, it's a process.
Just so that you understand, I'll probably bring up that question every time because the board here one time said that nobody ever builds in a floodplain. So, nobody ever went? A question about the, uh.
I'm sorry, can you, what was that again?
The, a long time ago, I, I had brought up a question about the floodplain and a, a member of this board said that nobody should have, nobody would ever build in a floodplain.
We're, we're, as, as, we're not building in a floodplain. We're building to match the existing, the flood stage is one fifteen, based on elevations and it's not jiving with the current map.
it's not jiving with the current maps.
Well, that's what I'm just saying.
They're looking at a basic reclassification of the maps to make the elevations.
And through, through the conservation.
I understand that, but all I'm saying is that it's like saying that you have to get all your, eyes dotted and t's crossed. It's like, you know, it's not truly a law until it's written down and everything like that. So, you know, it's all well and good to say, yes, everything is going through and everything will be fine, but until it's been declared, yes, we've changed the floodplain and everything is fine, you know, it's, it's, it just hasn't happened, you know?
So just, I'll just wrap, try to wrap this up. As part of the Conservation Commission process, we have to, we have to compensate if we fill in any of the floodplain areas, which we're working through those details based on that 115 contour. The FEMA-Loma stuff has nothing to do with the CONCOM permitting of filling in, compensating or anything. It's just a federal map that needs to match eventually. No big deal, just formality. It takes a while.
I have a question about the, the athletic field. I believe the athletic field has been delayed one year, exactly according to what I received September 2021. Is that true?
There's no delay in the athletic field schedule. No, the athletic field is currently scheduled to be completed in September of 2021.
Okay, so.
There's no delay.
Okay, so now it's scheduled for that time?
It's current, currently, in working with the construction manager and all the other project participants, the construction schedule is currently laid out for the athletic field to be complete by or on or before September 1st, 2021.
Yes, that's the date that I have. When you were talking about athletic events and everything like that, you were talking about this area down in here. How is this, are we going to have just a one-way so that they have to go up here and they don't try to come out?
Can't go right.
Can't go right?
Never go right.
Okay. So we just have to make sure that they come up around here, and then you're going to have cars lined around here if they, if it need be?
I mean, that's not, it's not an absolute thing. It was just, they were just saying it's possible.
Okay, I just.
With the amount of spaces there, I'm not sure you're going to get to the point where you're going to end up very many cars needing to be around the ring unless you've got some major event going on.
I just.
And there's no striking. They're not striking.
Right, it would be official parking.
I understand, but that's, I really think it's a bad idea because you're going to have these people trying to come around, you're going to have people coming, trying to merge into this flow of traffic coming out.
I think to be fair, I think if, if that ends up happening, it's going to be something that the police department is going to be.
Yeah, you're really going to need somebody there to keep them under control.
Again, there is a detail anytime there's an event like that, so if they don't feel that that's a, a good thing, they'll simply tell the cars to move, so.
Okay.
It's not something we're going to regulate, put it that way.
Okay, thank you very much.
Anyone else in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, bring it back to the board. Anything further from the board at this time?
All set.
All set.
All right. Gentlemen, we'll wait your, your next middle for our next meeting.
Build it.
So with that, do we have a motion to continue this to 7:15 on our February 24, 2020 meeting?
Some move, Mr. Chairman.
A motion made. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion made and second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and board members.
Dig the hole.
All right, so one, one note I'd like to make. Obviously, there's no one here. This is more just, again, for the record and for anyone who sees this at home, our, our February 24, 2020 meeting will be held in the first floor meeting room, which is the one sort of just around the corner from this one because the main hall, this hall, being used for early voting. So we will be able to use this on the 24th, so we'll be over in the other room. So says the note I have.
I think give us the ability for the screen that they can put that on.
Yeah.
All right, so with that, moving on to old business. Is there any old business that anyone wishes to discuss at this time? All right, seeing no old business, new business.
I want to thank Anna for the update on the Hilton Hotel. We're at the final stage of the appeal process, so that's over.
Well, excellence. Nice to see that one finally getting out of the way.
Yes.
Are they, any indication that they're?
We haven't heard.
Any indication that they're going to move forward?
My understanding, though, was on our previous update that their intention was still to do so. They were just awaiting the final, I mean, no guarantees, obviously, but.
I hope to God they do. The way my taxes just went up.
I'm going to take this, this under new business. Mr. Ryder sent me a, you call it a schedule request?
Yes.
Due to some now foreseen conflicts. Yeah, I'll let Mr. Ryder explain it.
Yes, my apologies. I've had a work change in schedule and for the next potential few months, so I requested through the chair if we can offset a few dates so I'm able to make them. I may not if they're on the other dates, so it's at the, up to the board. I did run, did speak with Anna and Mr. Sadwick, and then ultimately through the chair, so.
All right, so.
What are the dates?
So that's, that's what I'm going to run through right now. So up until our March meeting, there's nothing you can do about any of those because they're already locked in, so you can't change anything up through the 9th. The first one on here that would be requested to change would be March 23rd to change it to the 30th. So we'll still have the right amount of meetings in the month of March. The break between meetings is about, you know, still about right. It's not a, a major change for that one. The next one would be April 6 would change to the 13th. The April 27 would not, obviously, because of the vacation week. The next one after that would be July, so instead of our meeting in July being on the 20th, the request would be to change it to the 13th. So again, we only have one meeting in July anyways, so that really still keeps it right in.
Sorry, I was just writing, finding where I could write this.
I can, I can send it to you if you want.
No, that's all right. March, March 30.
So March 23 would change to the 30th.
Correct.
The next one would be April 6 would change to the 13th of April. No change to the April 27 meeting, no change in May or June.
Okay.
The next change request would be July 20 changing to the 13th.
That's it?
Then it would be, you go down all the way to October would be the next one. So October, the change would be from the 19th to the 26th.
And it may, I mean, I think beyond that point, I think we could.
Yeah, revisit it later. So why don't we stop there? There's a couple others, but they may not even end up being necessary, so rather than messing with the end of the year schedule, the last one would be the 19th changing to the 26th. Are there any of those that anyone knows they would have a conflict with at this time?
Nothing with that.
Okay, so.
While we're looking at that.
Yep.
December 7, it'll be the same thing as this year. There'll be two of us not here.
We don't have, we only have a meeting scheduled for the 21st. We have no meeting, we only have one meeting in December this year.
This is, we only have the 21st.
We've only scheduled one meeting in December this year.
What's the meeting, what's the date?
The day's the 21st. We have just the one meeting. We did that because of all the conflicts and rather than schedule, right.
Remember last year, you guys did that, and I think Anna did only.
We decided, so we're going to treat it like we do in the summer because there's so many things going on in December for everyone.
Yep.
We're just going to do the one meeting in December.
So it's the 21st?
The 21st, correct.
They're too close.
Jim, what do we have for dates in September? I just wanted to make sure.
September, currently, the dates are the 14th and 21st.
Back-to-back weeks.
That's because of the holidays, the way the holidays fall on the 7th and the 28th? It doesn't exist with any other dates but those?
Yeah, we only had the 21. How long was that?
All right?
Yep.
All right, so if no one has any known conflicts with those, those changes, we request a motion to change our meeting schedule to make those changes.
Some move, Mr. Chairman.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion made and second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. All right, that takes care of new business.
Appreciate it.
We need to appreciate. Motion to adjourn.
Hold on, hold on, we're not quite there. We have our correspondence. Is there anything in the correspondence anybody needs to discuss?
No.
No?
Motion to adjourn.
One, one more. We had the town planners' report, which basically just was the one thing Mr. Fowler mentioned, which was the comment about the hotel. That was the only thing in the town planners' report. That was where Anna's letter was. So now, Mr. Delaney, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
I got to get my name in the paper somewhere.
All right. All right, we have a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
Second.